So, starting.
You're all ready? Welcome, everybody, to the North San Antonio Solar Authority and SSA Work Session. May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. I'm Ken Woodward, Vice Chair. Tim, Chairman Timmy's running a little late, so this is our work session. It's one oh five. Roll call.
Mr. Nielsen.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gander.
Here.
Mr. Co-Chair.
Here.
I am Janet Seinfeld, and as the Co-Chair said, the Chair is the lead.
There we do have five, we go up four. Any declaration of conflicts of interest? Hearing none? Any announcements? Hearing none? Public Board Service Evidence One-on-One. Bill Bonahan. It's all yours.
Okay, thanks. Hi, everybody. So I'm Bill Bonahan, I'm the General Counsel to the Midland County Council of the City. And I'm actually, it's gonna be a period for eight-five minutes in Detroit. So I was asked to provide the board with some training on governance, governance one-on-one issues. So I know all of you, if not all of you, have been members of the city council. So you probably at some point in time had some training from the League of Oregon Cities. Either in their elected essentials trainings or at one of their conferences, annual conference. For the mayor's, probably has some training at the Oregon American Association. But I was asked to cover a few topics, so I have prepared an outline that I think has been provided to you, maybe not. But it's about twenty pages that has a compilation of a number of trainings that I've done over the years primarily on public meeting law, public records law. Some issues related to dealing with staff, staff relationships with board members. Also some challenges that we're seeing over the years developed within city structures primarily, but also they apply in special districts and authorities. And also having some ethics issues. But I'm not sure about covering all the areas that you want. The task was given to me about two months ago by Laura when she contacted me and said that the the board was looking for some level of training. So I wonder, are there any particular topics that you don't think would come under public meetings, public pressures? Ethics? Those related topics, other things that you also would like me to kind of fit?
I think something about emails, you know, how many you can include in an email.
In the context of public meetings and public records, yeah. Yeah, I knew there was, that was a topic emails, I assumed, yeah, it was the context. That's great. Anything else? So am I also being, are people looking in, other members of the board? Because I want to make, it looks like I've got my back to the.
Cameras right over there.
Cameras over there, okay. So where would someone typically stand to do a presentation to you in this room? Who first?
For city council, we stand over there, but that's obviously not.
Is there anybody online?
Yeah, because I don't want to insult anybody by.
And I don't know if anybody is online, so no, okay. So we're all present in a gathering board.
Cool. You're in Mexico.
Yeah.
Well, I thought people retired. We're going for one. Yeah, our rooms definitely. Anyway, can I sit here?
Yes, please.
That work. That way I want to subroll.
You're in, you're in range.
Okay, so I've done a lot of training over the years. I just, my background is I was a city planner when I first moved to Oregon about forty-two years ago. So initially I was working in city planning work, then I became a city attorney. Then I became a city manager, then I became a city attorney, then a city manager, then doing attorney work again. And over the course of that time, I've been asked many times to train planning commissions and city council runs. So the materials that I've developed are ones that come from my work. As well as work with the law firm that I worked with primarily, and I trained by the name of Tim Raines, so I worked with him and developed law materials. Then some of my materials were also filled in from John O'Day, who was the executive director of the court. And then some others are taken from other work that I did with the, with the League of Oregon Cities. So I trained the league on such topics as, as ethics, as that a number of times throughout the state, and also on issues such as how to have effective city, city council staff relationship. So what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do today is to give the basics, but also to answer your questions. Because I know as a, an organization that is made up of differing jurisdictions, you might have some questions as to, well, who am I representing? I come from one of the four cities, I'm going to be casting votes, who am I representing? Who do I need to be taking into account as my primary client and responsibility? Because there are ethical issues that we need to be concerned about. Okay? So I'm going to try to go through this outlines to some extent. Trying to cover the topics for you, but the best I can do is be responsive to you. I would really like it if, as issues come up that are not clear to you, or if something prompts us another question that you have, please ask me at that point in time, I think that'd be most beneficial. If I don't get the raw materials, I tried to be as complete as I could be to give you a lot of information. So if I don't cover everything, I think you'll get the gist of it. And again, I know you're all very experienced and qualified in your positions before, so you don't allow us people. Well, let's jump into public meeting law. And as, as you know, the public meeting law, the purpose of public meeting law is to provide the public an opportunity to watch the body in its function. And to monitor that body to make sure that that body's following proper rules and that the decisions that they make are made in a way that takes into account the input of the community in false laws. But what I want to emphasize is on public meeting law, you are not required always to have a public comment. You get to choose time, place, and minute, or when that public on, public communication takes place. So the public's able to participate by being there, watching you, and now of course we have the hybrid meetings that institutionalize now after COVID nineteen. So people have an opportunity to participate more than just within the room. But a meeting in the context of the Oregon Public Meeting Law is one that has a forum of the governing body when it is meeting for the purpose of trying to deliberate through its decision, but also for when it's gathering information, doing fact gatherings for a future decision. One thing I emphasized here in the first page was reference to the Oregon's now regulated transit union case with Prime. This is the issue of serial meetings, let's just go up to serial meetings, because that's one that you've probably heard about, but it's really not settled yet as to what the ultimate interpretation of the serial meeting is going to be. Several years ago, there was a case down, I think it was in Lake County, where, at the handy case, where there was an issue where there were communications outside of a public meeting room that led to a public meeting being held. Typically, a public meeting is like here, is we is noticed, we know where it's going to be, we know it's accessible to the public, we know when the meeting's going to take place, we know it's on the agenda, and we carry it out in the proper way. We teach minutes, and everybody's happy. A serial meeting, however, is one that could be an inadvertent meeting, it isn't intended that a meeting be held, but somehow it crosses the line and a forum of the public body is meeting. Now, I know in your situation for the authority, you have two members of each jurisdiction as members. So you've got a membership of eight, which leads to that odd thing that a forum is not. So five out of eight would be a forum, so theoretically.
Excuse me, we only have seven, so we still have L to the five as the forum?
Well, um, under your bylaws, you, at least for you, you have, so you've got a couple of the documents, I think, that began up at fifteen any time. One is the formation document, the, the RS one ninety document, the other is your own board and board proceeds. Now, let's see, if I can remember exactly, is the forum spelled out in? Yeah, so on second page six, I'm sorry, item six on page four, I guess these pages are numbered. But it says each director should have one vote, a majority of all the directors on the board on the board shall constitute the forum required for deliberating. So when there is, I would interpret that to mean that when there is only seven members that are actually appointed, then a forum would be four out of seven. Okay, thanks for asking that question, you're good, but actually you need to look at documents such as this sometimes to get those in. It's not intuitive and it's not consistent. So in your case, the serial meeting could come up in the context of you've got an item that's coming forward for another agenda, let's say you're going to be acting on whether to approve a contract. And you're, the juror's been sent out to you so that you know the details, but you're going to come to a meeting another week or so and actually have a discussion about it and get a more full presentation. But you're starting to get acclimated to what the materials say. Let's say one board member contacts the other board member, I'm reading this, this is what I think it says, and somewhere in that conversation, a person reveals how they're leaning, they're leaning to approving the contract because let's say it's a contract that there are two different very equal potential contractors, it could go either way. But during that conversation, person A learns what person B's leaning towards doing. And then person B runs into person C, maybe someone from another city, and has a conversation, and that conversation learns how person C is saying. And maybe even share what they heard person A said. You see where it's going there. When it gets to a place that four, the majority in your case, four individuals, the, this knowledge of how someone is going to vote, theoretically, that is a, a meeting. And in the handy case, I can't remember exactly what the, what the gist of it was, I think it was, it might have gone about personnel matter, and somehow the majority get made up their minds, or at least it appeared that way. The court came down and ruled that that was a serial meeting violation of the Oregon Meeting Law. And in the second case that I referred to, the now regulated transit union post, that was more related to collective bargaining, people talking outside of the meeting room about collective bargaining and learning how their fellow board members going to vote. League of Oregon City says been giving training for at least the last four or five years now, where they've been saying, we're waiting for this to be resolved by the legislature or by another court case that's more clear. But right now, take it very seriously and be very, very careful not to create serial meetings. So the emphasis here is, if you have the opportunities, please make sure you're taking all of your business into the advertised public meeting that's open to the public as opposed to forming conclusions, decisions with your fellow members outside of the meeting room. Because number one is bad business practice, the violation of the law, the secondly, it erodes public trust. If the public thinks you're coming into the meeting, you're already made up your mind, and they, they get that impression, they're going to assume that every decision is made that way, and they're going to make the decision that there's no reason for them to come to your meetings and watch you deliver. So that's the issue with serial meeting. If there's less of a forum involved, and I'm going back to the settings where you're actually in a meeting room, you've got a meeting that's been advertised, you're in the process. In that case, if you don't have a forum show, then you don't have a public meeting. And if you don't have a public meeting, you don't have to then conform with the next things that come with there being the public meeting, namely having meetings kept, actually allowing the public to, to speak, et cetera. If you don't have a forum, you're either going to say, we're not able to meet today because we don't have a forum. And as a result, the meeting is canceled, it'll take place another time. Or you turn the meeting into something less than a public meeting, it's more like a, this is just an informal gathering where people get some information from whoever's here who came to provide us with a fat presentation, they can just ask them a couple of general questions, but none of this is towards making a decision, we'll have to have a further discussion later. But that's what you have at the forum.
And when, when you don't have a forum, and then they just have a gathering, and you're talking, you don't have to have, well, our summary notes, we do the summary notes, we don't, you don't have to keep summary notes, or or if it's a council, you don't have to.
That's right, if, if you don't have a, a formal meeting, if you don't have all the elements, you, you, if you haven't even noticed, if you haven't don't, don't have a forum, primarily, you don't have a forum, you didn't, you then don't have to complete the circle of doing all the things that you normally do with a meeting. But again, you're going to have that full meeting at another time.
Right.
If you look at the second page, there's a couple of things.
Before, before you go on. So what's your typical advice to a board or a council? Would you prefer that they just push things forward and abandon the meeting?
Yes, yes, I would highly recommend that, that if you arrive at a meeting and you thought you were going to have a forum, and then you wait a period of time, you don't get a full forum, I would say abandon, call, call it off. If you're able to determine when the appropriate time is for the, for the next meeting, so you can do it efficiently. But don't conduct a, well, since we're all here, let's just talk about it anyway, because that's a disadvantage to the other members of the, of the governing body. Because you're potentially following some opinions, and it's looking like a serial meeting with the possibility that one of you should leave the meeting. Finally reaches the person that could have made the forum, you said they were going to be there, and they say, so what happened? And you explain what these are the things that took place, oh, I can agree with that, well, this is a serial meeting. So I highly recommend it, you know.
So when I first got involved eighteen months ago, we used to have semi-regular work sessions. And they seemed to go along defined for quite a while, you know, there would be no more than three board members. So then all of a sudden, we have another board member that would appear suddenly that we didn't expect, and, and maybe one or two cases was invited, but suddenly we had a forum, and I think we became very confused about how we acted or could act in that situation, even when we only had three. So clarification for me is, can we have a work session of three people and whatever, whether Republican and or broadly public, I mean, if you notice, it was on Zoom, and we do that without fear of repercussions from anyone in the audience.
So I'm a little confused, did, did, just hearing you say that the work sessions that you scheduled, where you just have three people, did you advertise those anywhere?
Yeah, I think we did.
Well, typically.
I don't know anything. Or not, right? I was noticed, that's all I know, and they were on Zoom, so somebody else was noticed, and there were always a number of other people. Now, how broadly that was an invitation when I couldn't tell you.
So, so my best advice is, and, and I, and I thought I understood how you operated from looking at your board policies. And within your board policies in the first page, they, this reference to board meetings, and then it talks about work sessions, and then it talks about special meetings, emergency meeting. Typically, all of those are meetings that would expect that the majority of the members of the board would attend, and you would advertise them expecting that there be a forum, so that you could conduct a meeting. A work session without a forum, to me, is not a work session. That's a subcommittee meeting or a special group meeting. So I just assumed when I read your meeting policy, that you were like every other board that I know of, that is going, it's, the work session is scheduled for everybody, and there's an expectation that everyone's participating and aware of what's going on. And yeah, it's the same information.
So it's a norm place, if you say it's a subcommittee, and there's only three people, that seems to be reasonable.
Yeah, although some committees also have to follow the public meeting law. Some committees also have to notice meetings, keep notice, and the public has an opportunity to participate.
When you say notice the meeting, so that, you know, Brian and I, see, I have a different understanding of what went on in terms of notice. So what's a proper notice?
Sure, well, that's a great, great question.
So let, let me add a point of clarification. I think what these meetings started out was, was working with staff. It was kind of like, let's work alongside staff, so we have our calendar straight as to what's going forward. You know, we're working on web page or logos, that kind of stuff. And that's kind of where it started, and I think it then kind of evolved as to more people wanting to be engaged in that, supporting the staff and knowing what staff was doing, because we were working on different things, like financial policies and, and stuff like that. So I think as long as we were in that realm, we were doing okay. Once we started getting three or four people to the forum level, then we maintained our publication of an agenda, but it may not have been on a public voting board.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm comfortable with where, where you started and where you've evolved, and very important that we have this meeting today, because you're, you're at a place, it sounds like, in the evolution of the authority, where you've done a lot of the preliminary work to get to know each other, to get to know what the functions of the group are going to be, you've been looking at a lot of studies, now you're in a place that you're going to be at more formal meetings and expecting everyone to participate. So the distinction is, when the governing body is planning to take some action, whether it's a work session to, to get a report that everyone needs to have, or whether it's a formal meeting where you're going to be taking some action, those are all within your stated meetings, work sessions, special meetings, or regular meetings. What you've been doing is you've been having a subcommittee or just one individual who's been assigned and delegated responsibility to work with staff member or consultant to get some information, to get it to a place that then could be brought forward to the body for review. That was perfectly acceptable, and meetings with the staff are not public meetings unless you have a forum. If you know you're going to have a forum, and that's the key thing, when you know this is going to be a forum, you have to provide notice of that being treated like a public meeting. And you have the ability under your board policies, as well as under Oregon Public Meeting Law, to have special meetings and executive sessions. So let's jump to that, what are, what are the different types? Well, a regular meeting is one of your four annual meetings that I saw within your policies, you're, you're going to have at least four meetings each year, you're going to rotate them around, get each jurisdiction, so that it bears some public procedure, and also so that it's kind of convenient for everyone to visit. In addition to those, you can have a special meeting, and special meetings can be held as long as you give at least twenty-four hours notice. But I believe your board policy says you're going to give at least forty-eight hours notice, so I think there's more notice. Then you have a work session, work sessions, kind of like a special meeting. You, you can give at least, you know, the twenty-four hours notice. Emphasis is give as much notice as you can. Number one, so that you can get all of your board members there, because this is only going to work for all of you, if all eight of you can participate. So make it as convenient as possible and sufficient notice that people can put it onto their calendars and to be there. Secondly, you want, the notice that you want to give should be available to the public, how are you going to do that? But what cities typically do is they will designate a publication of I can't remember the term right now, but it's, it's who, how they usually put their public notices. So they will identify in January, and this is going to be our publication, where our notice is going to be. Well, you should be able to get those, those, the newspaper primarily, if there is one that they cover here, to put those notices in for you, be the for a page amount, but they don't have to be a page, or just a public announcement, just put it in there. Then put it on your website, I know you've got a vibrant website at the time.
I was going to ask you on the website, is, is social media appropriate for that notice? Again, in Detroit, we have numerous special council meetings, and we use social media primarily beside our, our website to, to let people know, and interestingly enough, there's a very broad audience on social media, and that seems to have been working very well.
Social media is fine, but I, I wouldn't rely just on social media and not have it on the website. Because if you ever get challenged and someone says, you're not advertising your videos. If you have, maybe after, have someone in your, in your local government put the notice up, and you rely on social media, I, I don't like that. I, I feel like being challenged, but yeah, if, the social media, as long as they reproduce the information, exactly. But the public needs to know, they can go to a central source and see the exact notice that you gave.
And I always provide the agenda, timing, get Zoom, whatever these numbers and pass codes are.
Yeah.
But it's on the website as well, which we can do very nicely.
So I assume probably that with the authority, each one of you goes back to your, your city and asks the city to create some link to the of the, the authority, and again, the authority's got its own webpage, and that looks really good, so I'm sure people can start to gravitate to that via those. Not sure if I completed my last thought, or maybe you, so with the public notification, that's primarily on page two of the, of this. The notification to put out should be reasonably calculated to give the public notice of what you're going to talk about. And you and your board procedures list what your agenda is going to look like. So I believe I saw that, that there's an order of business where it says, here's what's going to be on the order of this. It's going to be the call to order, then there's presentations, then there's versus to be heard, or a community comment. And then there's going to be the consent agenda, then an executive session if needed, I want to come back to that. Then there's old business and new business and discussion time and a year. So you've got your agenda already laid out within your board rules, this is how we're going to do it. And then you plug in the particular items, you need more specificity. The board, the, the old business is going to be, going to continue the discussion about the contract for the whatever. There's much information that tells the public, oh, they're going to bring that item back again, so I should be. As long as you give reasonable, calculated, reasonable notice, calculated to let the public know what's going to be talked about, then you're going to be complying with the law. That doesn't mean that you can't add something at the last minute. You can add something, but for instance, what if you get a letter from your congressman that arrived two hours before the meeting, and the congressman's saying, we got to get together, and we need an emergency meeting, and it is one, because there's funding coming down, you can add that to the agenda. To have a conversation about that, to determine what your stance is going to be, whether you're available, who you're going to send that, so that's the bottom. But you need to be true to the commitment to let the public know what you're going to be talking about. So if you know, you're going to be talking about something on the agenda, add it to the agenda.
Do you need the board's approval or council's approval to the add it to the agenda?
Now, do you need the board's approval or council's approval to the add it to the agenda?
You know, this is a great question that I struggle with because I find that some organizations. Go through uh an elaborate process. That they'll say, well, if there's going to be something added to the agenda. It'd be like a pre-meeting for the regular meeting where. Uh, the the group will go through the agenda with the staff. And is there anything we should be doing to adjust the agenda? Because sometimes as someone will say, well, I haven't had a chance to read everything on this particular item. I'm not comfortable. I think we need to get more information. I'd like to take that out of off the agenda, so I'm going to make that motion beginning of the meeting. Or somebody's got something to add to that. But typically, some organizations allow the presiding officer to make that decision. I like the process where there's some discussion about. Approving the agenda as you're getting ready to start the meeting. And there's discussion about is it anything that should be focused or anything that should be added? And then the body makes the decision. And sometimes too, you're reordering something. You thought that item numbers, the last item on the agenda, you thought that item should be the the last item. But now you found that there's twenty people that came to the meeting who want to participate on that. You don't want to lose them all, so you move that item to the beginning of the agenda. You have that flexibility. Your your policies and the Oregon meeting law. Um, support that. Okay. What I find odd about your. Board policy on meetings is where you put it executive sessions. Because what you have in in here is after you go through the preliminary, some of the preliminary things, you go into an executive session. If needed. And then after that, you're coming back. And having um. Other discussion, you're going back to old business, new business. My recommendation. Is that you determine what your best practice is going to be in your preference and have your executive sessions either at the beginning of the meeting or at the end. Sometimes even if you're, I don't know when you have your regular meetings, but let's say your regular meeting is at. One o'clock on a um, the the fourth. Tuesday, I think this is the fourth Tuesday, the fourth Tuesday every three months. If you regularly meet at one o'clock. Maybe you have your executive section at bedtime. For eleven thirty. So you're able to advertise the executive session. You're able to take care of it. Without it disrupting the flow of your regular meeting. Because when you have an executive session, here's what happens. The presiding office says, okay, we've reached point of the executive session. Let's say you've been in the flow of meeting for about forty-five minutes. You have some public comment with some people gave some. Input and you know they really want to talk about the new business that's coming up later in the agenda. Now you come to the point and you say, under RS one ninety-two, six sixty section two, whatever, we're going to go into executive setting. You clear the room. Well, some people might be here or they're on the watching. Your obligation, and this isn't said very often in the public meetings. Your obligation is to tell the public when you whether or not you're going to come back into session. And by the way, how how long do you think the executive set is going to take? Because they have to decide whether they're going to hang or abandon. So if you do it before the beginning of the meeting and you estimate the amount of time and you advertise it. You can take care of business and not disrupt the rest of the meeting. And it gives you the ability during the meeting itself. If there was some action you needed to take. Coming out of the executive session. You can take it during the meeting. Other alternative, you do the executive session at the end of the meeting. So you take care of all the other things that you do. Now it's what? Four thirty in the afternoon. And you've got an executive session. Are you actually going to come out of the executive session and take action? Some of you might have other commitments. You might have your regular city council meeting that I need to get back to your community. So you need to take any consideration with how things typically work for you. And what you need to say.
That makes really good sense. I I mean, I've been doing boards for an awful long time. And they're always afterwards. The executive section matters and what you said makes all the sense in the world in terms of. Bringing that information forward. So that everybody can almost immediately understand what was discussed and. Any action, then of course, taking in the old meeting.
Well, thank you. And with executive sessions, sometimes they take a lot more time than you thought they were going to take. Because as you know, with executive sessions, if you're talking about litigation, you're bringing in your lawyers. Maybe the only time you talk to your lawyers about an issue and you need a lot of time to. To digest before giving direction.
No chairs, no coffee, and no no lawyer.
That's the rules.
Yeah, so did you address the executive session in a hybrid format? Is there a lot of times?
Yeah.
I mean, in previous boards I sat where the board left the room, the audience stayed in the chamber, the board. Went to the meeting room next door and. Held the executive session in that room while the public stayed. Um, they need to stay, so. Sometimes our board members are on Zoom. And so it seems like it's going to be rather complicated to do executive sessions. Using the hybrid format.
It it can be and uh. With with hybrid. I've seen some some of the cities that I've worked with. Not the ones that I represent here in. The NSA, but some of the other cities I've worked with. They'll hold their executive session and there'll be there are still some members of council who don't feel comfortable coming back into a regular meeting. So they're participating in the executive session remotely. And those communities have. Zoom or WebEx, their their way of holding the meeting. And there'll be someone who's participating remotely. You know how technology is, things break down and it disrupts the flow of the dance. There's also the concern about is in fact. Everyone who has access to that meeting remotely. Are they all conforming to the expectations that you have that they? Don't breach confidentiality. Um. I'm sorry, I'm jumping around quite a bit. I was going to get to executive sessions, but I'm I'm happy to do it this way. That's all right. I'm happy to do it this way for you. Because then I can give you probably more uh complete um. Complete input, but what I'm going to do is I'm going to drop, I'm going to go to executive sessions if you don't mind. I'll tell you a little bit about executives. So with executive segments.
Are you going to clarify this issue of social media being open on an executive second because uh it's of interest to me. In Detroit, we've made a decision that we do not do executive sessions on Zoom or anything else. If you want to participate here in person, period. Because we've had some horror stories. Developed in meetings where you thought somebody wasn't on and they were on and they heard confidential discussion regarding personnel slash. Uh, HR policy issues and it was awful. So uh, we came to the conclusion that. You know, if you don't want to drive to Detroit, fine, that's your choice, but you're not going to be involved because we're we're turning this thing off.
But you're talking about a council member, correct?
Well, yeah, but it could be for. Our our board meeting as well.
Right, right. All right, okay. Um. Let me come back to that. Let me first.
I just wanted to.
Yeah, let's get a foundation of executive sessions and then talk about social media and the conduct of these actions. So. With your. Your meetings, let let me let me go back to the meetings further. So under conduct of meetings. You know that you can only make decisions within a public meeting. That's all genesis of the civil meeting law. So when you make a decision. It has to be recorded within the the meeting. So there is there's no such thing as a um secret secret ballot, secret vote. Every decision needs to be recorded. So when you make a decision at your council meeting. Or an authority meeting. The recorder is going to identify who voted which way and it's going to be. Okay. Um. Those meeting minutes. Need to be available to the public in a reasonable period of time. Now I know a lot of communities have difficulty getting those meeting minutes up. I was at a council meeting on Monday night. Uh, of last week where there was a a meeting minutes from March thirteenth and I was going to the math in my head. I said, this is two months late. That's not a reasonable period of time. There isn't any legal standard that stated in the public meetings law. But the Secretary of State's offices offer the thirty days they consider to be reasonable. Is forty-five days reasonable? Not so sure. But I think two months is not feasible. If the public meeting minutes are not finalized. Within a reasonable period of time, they still are available to the public. The public can ask for draft some minutes minutes. Now that's dangerous. Because if the public's able to get draft meeting minutes. And the person who's prepared them is quite liberal with what they put in there and they really weren't. Uh, were very careful. They might put some things in there that are inflammatory or. You you wouldn't see them in the final meeting minutes. So my recommendation is get them out within thirty days so you don't have to have the situation that you have to give the. Um. So what is required in the in the meeting minutes? All that has to be in those are who are the participants from the from the governing body. What's discussed, generally. The gist of the conversation, any motions and votes that are taken and any documentation that was provided within the meeting. Okay, you don't have to list every citizen that came and spoke. I've seen some. Communities list every citizen. That's great. Uh, but it's not necessary. Meeting minutes also don't have to be transparent quality. These the recommendation used to be, they just need to be topical in nature. That's identify what you're talking about, who participated. You don't have to go into great detail and say he said, she said, because. Frankly, that creates problems sometimes. I was at a meeting recently where the meeting minutes reflected what had been done at a man's appeal hearing. And the person who was the appellant of the man's appeal hearing challenged the meeting minutes by saying those meeting minutes are biased. Those are biased against me. And this person has a distrust as to the to the staff here. But interestingly enough, in that case, the meeting minutes are not done by staff. They send them out to an outside transcription service, professional service that takes them directly from the tape. So they read why is there bias? But. Because there was so much detail. That person felt was biased because it had. A summation of their thoughts.
Now, now we do summary and assess and sum.
So that's fine. Again, as long as any votes uh that are taken and any any documents you rely on need to be referenced in those. I talked a little bit about the types of meetings. You can have a spectrum meeting. You can also have emergency meetings. Emergency meetings can be done with less than twenty-four hours notice for obligation then. Is to make sure you get the notice out to the governing body. You've got to tell the governing body. We're going to have an emergency meeting. You can't just say, well, as long as we can get five out of our seven, that's fine. And leave out two people because obviously that's going to erode the the confidence of the of the group. And also it's not legal. You also should be making the press, whoever you've identified as your press. People identify to them that the meeting is going to be held. Because there's a preference within Oregon meeting law. To give the press the opportunity to monitor our behavior. To make sure we can form to the public meeting law and make meetings. Uh, we we make decisions correctly.
Uh, is there any discrepancy in that? In emergencies? Or I don't even press to be involved in the executive sessions. I I just had experience. On hospital board where you refused to allow the press and I'm just wondering if that applies generally or or.
So generally, we want to make the press aware of any meetings that we're holding. We want to make them aware of anything that we're talking about so they can decide whether they want to be there. To participate. And what I'm noticing is this less and less press attendance at regular meetings. They're only coming for the good stuff. They're coming for the executive session. And with the executive sessions, you have to.
That's the good stuff.
That's a good stuff. Um, with the executive sessions. You need to identify what exception you're using to get into the executive session. And if you put it in here, I'm starting on page uh. I'm going through. Seven, five of page. Six thousand. The print is red. My printer doesn't do very good with red. The bottom of page six is listed executive session. We're only able to go into executive sessions for certain exceptions, maybe a given run. Is there a meeting?
Yeah. Not just flipping the rest of the list on the other side.
Mine's in red. So you can have six. Executive session. The. Legislature has determined what's what we can go into executive session for. We can talk about the employment of the public. We can talk about. The uh, collective bargaining. We can talk about litigation. We can talk about real estate transactions and a bunch of other things. We have to give notice of what the exception is that we're going into an executive session. So at the beginning of of an executive session. You're going to say the the usually there's a script. And the zionists say, we're going into the executive session under this provision of RS one ninety-six sixty. You don't have to say to discuss the transaction on the Smith property. You don't have to do that. You're going to talk about real estate transaction. That's it, real estate transaction. I don't have to say. Or I've seen some communities give a little more detail and I sprint a little bit. Once you go into that executive session, the press is allowed in. The only people who are allowed into an executive session. Are. The governing body. Whatever staff you decide to bring in. And be careful with that. Sometimes I've I've seen a revolving door where there's several staff outside and. One staff comes in for this, maybe for the next executive session topic. That's probably the best way rather than to involve your. Police chief. In collective bargaining related to the uh. Public works. Um, contract that so. You can invite any staff members you want in. The press is allowed in. And you can invite anyone else you want to. Anyone else. So for instance, if you're um. If you know that. Your jurisdiction is going to appoint somebody else. To fill. You a a role on this body from the city council. But the attorney's not going to stop until September. You might ask the rest of the board, hey, can we ask? Have that person come a meeting early so they can get used to what we're doing and you can invite them into the executive session. The only problem is. They are not held to the same standards as you are. When you come into an executive session, your obligation is to maintain complete confidentiality of what's on. Both. To anyone else other than the participants in the executive session outside of the room. And make sure you're not talking to the press. Outside of the room. Or anyone else. But you can invite those people in. There's a risk. But I want you to know you can invite this. All right, let's talk about this. So the press by law is allowed into all executive sessions unless the topic is collective bargaining. And I think the exclusion there is is a thought that well, maybe it is a member of that person's family. Who might be a member of the collective bargaining unit. Now that's what I say in materials, but there's also another exception. If there's litigation between the city or the authority and the press. Obviously, if the discussion is about the litigation with the press, they can. So what are the obligations of a member of the press? They are able to monitor the meeting, participate in the meeting, be there. And if there's a slip up. If during that conversation and in the executive session, the authority starts to talk about some other topic. That's not under the exception. Press has the right to report on what they just heard on the confidential stuff that was done properly. You opened up the entire meeting. By messing up. So typically, what a city would do is have this city attorney there and that's what city attorneys do out there. Is monitor and keep them on the right track. You can't introduce into the executive session something else. Somebody says, oh, by the way, I just heard that. Uh, we have litigation that spawned against us on such and such. And let's talk about that. Well, wait a minute. It wasn't noticed before coming into the meeting. Now there's a way around it. You can finish the executive session. Go back into your regular meeting and then announce another executive session. And come into that other executive session under the exception to get to that topic. That somebody had just learned about. I get concerned about the press participating in a hybrid meeting. And executives. There's one city that I serve, or what they do. They invite a person, they allow them to, they allow the press to participate remote. I don't think that's a good practice. Second thing is. In that instance that I'm referring to, the press appears and they don't turn on the camera. Well, how do I know that they're in a sitting in a bar at trivia night? And have everybody else hearing the city business? So I worry about exactly what you do, Danny. Then there needs to be a limitation on who has the ability to participate and listen in. And if a council member is at home and everybody else is in the meeting. And they're at home, but you don't know who's blocking. In the room, you don't know who's on the other side of the camera, usually the camera's facing them, who's on the other side? Now, we have to have some level of trust, obviously, with the people that we work with. But if you can limit the exposure to the desk. Who is the press? This isn't talked about that much anymore, but several years ago, there were issues about. I wrote a blog. I report on city business or authorities business, let's say you've got somebody who takes to hurt. Uh, the sewer issues of the North San Antonio area. And they decide to start writing a blog. And after they write those blogs for a few months and they're disseminating information, because I've looked at all the studies that come to you. Then they decide to present themselves to you and they say, I am a member of the press. And here, I I'm showing you that I have a hundred and twenty-five people that regularly look at my blog. Allow me into the executives. It's unclear as to whether you need to be allowed in or not. My recommendation is you do not, and see what they do. See what steps they take, but they possibly could go to the secretary of state or the district attorney and make a claim that. Hey, I'm a member of the press, just my credentials, and it might be a factual issue. Some communities. And uh typically said. Thank you very much for raising that issue, right, with the executive session staff, but we're not gonna let you in right now. Uh, we'll take it under advisement, give us your information, we'll analyze it, maybe you get it to the next meeting. That's the problem, there's a best practice. Some communities get strong on, and they feel, well, looks good to me, we'll let them in. If you allow that member of the press in, it not helps the same standards as others, members of, shall we call them the legitimate press. Because the legitimate press usually has a publisher. And advertisers, and they don't like to be called out and held to be to the community as. Not being trustworthy uh particip- participants in the executive session. But this blocker I just referred to, who knows what their uh objectives are, what standards they comply with. There are no penalties if the press violates the. Uh, public meeting law. And in fact, does report something, if they think the story is so hot that they. This cover reporter decides, I'm gonna get this news up, and they violate the public, the executive section privilege. The only um consequences, so you contact the publisher and say. Look at the facts, and maybe you shouldn't have this person be a. A reporter, and please don't send them to our jurisdiction.
So and and then you have a decision about. Whether uh, for example, you have to be physically present to be part in the. Do you have to have that in your procedural? Or?
So I'm glad you brought that up, because I've forgotten that element of what you're saying, so. The the issue of having a city council president. I think a member of city council. And they're elected. And members of this authority, when they're appointed by the by their local government. I think there's an expectation that the rest of the governing body is going to. Allow that person to participate in some other manner than to be present physically. And the reason I say that is because even before COVID nineteen. The public meetings law, the what I use as my manual is the Oregon Attorney General's. Manual on Public Meetings and Public Rights law. And there'd be a lot of advisory stuff, and one of the advisory things is that it's perfectly okay to hold telephonic meetings. And it's perfectly okay for members of the city council, or in this case, the authority who are out of town, to participate in the meeting by telephone. And typically, that is just about, it's about regular meetings, but it extends to executive sessions. Because you're gonna be trusting of your your fellow council member or authority member. To know what the rules are. And when it gets through the executive session, not to be sitting in trivia night, not to be sitting with. Other members of their neighborhood who are listening in. But it's important to emphasize that to people, make sure people are aware of what your expectation. Hold your fellow members accountable for following the rules and protect upon executive session. And make sure that you're not making reasons because of voice questions. Executive sessions, as you know, cannot make a final decision in the in an executive session. You can give direction. You can reach some kind of consensus if you'd like additional information or something like that, but you can't make a final decision. You have to come out into a regular session and make a final decision. Some cities that I know of will say uh right on their agenda. That we're going into executive session and also won't return and make a decision, well, you don't know that you're gonna make a decision, so I would put that on there. If you if you're going to come back into regular session, again, if you move to the end of the. Agenda, you can say, we're gonna come back in, but it's better to have a an announcement by the design ops. So people know, is is something happened during the meeting that that changed it? So I talked about telephonic meetings, electronic meetings. Let's go public records. So with public records. Anything and everything that is part of the conduct of your authority's business. Is public record, so these materials that we handed up are public records. One set is a public record. The reason I say that is some people go to the extreme and think, well, there's seven of us here. Each one of us needs to hand in our materials at the end of the meeting, and we need to put them all into the outcap, that's not true. Just one set of whatever's before the body. Unless, however, this, now I'm going back against the lead Oregon city and some and some of their their most um. Direct comments. If you have taken these meeting minutes, or or read one of these meeting materials, and you've made personal notes on them of the meeting, that's a public record. You've created a public record. And the most recent case on that that is uh challenging for all of us is Wes Lynn's situation from several years ago. Where a member of the city council was in an executive session. And has a habit of using a uh a notebook and puts in her notes. That she uses this notebook for other things too. She's involved in the health related, and so sometimes she has telephone conversations with people. Who ask her advice, and she might say, well, so what's your mom's medical condition right now, is she stable, and writes those notes in. There was a request for the executive session minutes of this individual. And it went to the Parkness County uh certi court, and that's what feels, and the decision is those meetings. Yes, taken by that member of the governing body. Are reachable. So when they're reachable and they have other things in them, that's problematic, because if you do have to produce it, because someone's made the public records request, somebody's gonna have to adapt. The stuff that's not reachable. And that can be expensive, and it also, again, these trust issues, wait a minute. Is five pages here, right when it started to get good, there's five pages of blacked out, redacted information, then it resumes again and they made a decision. You're telling me that's that information is not reachable, that's. That conversation you had about the healthcare work with somebody else, probably. So that case um. Still is out there. Uh, it's Elastowski versus City Westland is far years ago, that's another one we hope, let's say, we'll face. So what's the public record, uh public record against, anything that comes before you in the conduct of your business after your meetings? Sent out by staff, it's also a communications, you get, so those comment about E N S. So you are obviously in your capacity in the authority, have not been issued a city issued laptop. And this, I'm sorry, the authority issued laptop and authority issued telephone. But if you have them. Best practice would be restrict all of your work to using the laptop and the phone for your for your authority business. Because the things that are public records or anything that's written. Okay, so any email communications that are done. By you on authority business. Our public records are good. Any text messages you receive that are. Written and received on your phone, those are authority public records that should be. Retained and preserved. Those are the, those are the critical things. They have public records, and then somebody needs to retain them so that they are reachable by somebody who might want to review them by making a public records request. So I'm not sure who your custodian is for the records of the authority. You all have a city recorder back at your local government. That's a person who is keeping the meeting minutes and keeping the documents that are submitted at a meeting. And at some point in time, they may be made a safety, by the way, the best practice for me is that every month you can. Give me anything that you're accumulated, downloads, email, some to me, so I can put them in the public record. I'm not interested in reading them, but I need to have them, because it's gonna be easier if there's a record request made. For me to be able to get them rather than bother to use when the request comes. A member of the public can make a public records request. Uh, without saying why they wanna see the records. They just have to follow the proper process, and typically in the cities, you probably have on your website. What your, the form that someone uses. And the custodian of the records has, I think, ten days to respond. And they can ask clarifying questions, do you really wanna have any and all emails from uh. Two thousand seven until two thousand twenty-three, do you really want all of those, or can you narrow it down, because. You do have the ability to charge for some of the costs. You charge for the cost of retrieving them and to printing them out. So sometimes you say. You know, narrow it down, the next thing you know, somebody says, all I want of the. The seven emails that I think might have been sent over the last several, seven months. To each of the council members, telling them the status of such and such project, that's all I want, okay, you're. When somebody makes a public records request, they're entitled to see the record. Okay, they're not, you you don't automatically go to baking them a copy. Unless they ask for it, because you can ask them to pay for it. But if they wanna see the record, you have to within. The prescribed period of time, allow them to come in and sit down and view that record. Now, the best practice I have for you uh comes in the land use context. So in a land use context, typically what happens is. A developer will make an application, or an app will make an application, there'll be an application file that the planner will compile from beginning to end. And it's got a lot of different materials and studies, maps, public comments, et cetera. If the public wants to see that, let them view the the file. But. Make sure you've got somebody watching them as if. If they come, let them into a certain room. Open up the file for them, I recommend it to be a staff member who's observing. For a couple reasons, one, the person might say, I want a copy of this letter and this file, this uh material. I want copies of that, and I want to pay for it, okay, staff members should take those and pick up the whole file, walk out of the room. Make copies, come back, and give the copies, or request, and then replace them into the file. I've seen situations where things go missing to the file, and they become exceptional documents, and. There's certain situations where something gets inserted into the file. So again, control those.
Other than using your phone.
Take a picture. Uh, that's certainly okay, you allow them to do that instead of making a copy. Uh. As as long as the materials that you're showing them are public records that are not acceptable. So before that file is brought forward, you wanna make sure that it's told, and that there's any. Uh, city attorney's recommendations or any any things that are protected documents, so.
So um. Our records are primarily electronic. And on the, we don't have, I think, a whole lot of paper, I mean, I do, I have boxes and boxes of paper, but as far as. The authority, it's all electronic files, like the state does, so that's.
That's great, that's great, because then you've got a lot of captured, then your any documents submitted to you by the staff are on record. Any communications to you directly are also captured, so any emails. But if you get an email on your personal phone. Uh, that's not directed to your authority address, it's your personal address, that, it was about authority business, that is probably. So that may not be captured, it sounds like you've got a great program.
Okay, um, when you're sending an email or you're sending. I'm sending an email to Janet. And it says that. Whoever's sending or discussing topics within the N S S A should be including. The N S S A Gmail account as well.
If you wanna capture it all as a public record.
That's what I saw you do, that's I, okay, so instead of. Me contacting Janet, talking about it, and forth, I have to include the Gmail account, so now it's. Other, you know, it's. Being kept.
Properly, so when I say have to, I don't mean it's required by law, I'm saying have to because that's practice, market. Then it doesn't put the burden on you at some point in time. To assemble all the communications you've had and send them to the record keeper. So I think that's the best practice, that's what you wanna talk about with your staff. To say, this is what the expectation is with everyone, and you might wanna put that into your board policies, it's already in there. Now, another thing that you wanna watch out for is the reply all. So if if two of you are going to communicate, and again. Who are you communicating is the first step to a serial meeting, so we don't wanna go to the the next step. But if you just are gonna have that one communication that doesn't go any further, that's fine. What you don't wanna do is send a note to everybody saying, this is my position on something, and send a reply. You send it to everybody.
Oh, boring.
Yes, because one of the board members might decide to say, well, I agree with so-and-so, and they send it out to everybody. There's a serial meeting.
But then everybody, even if that happened. The Gmail account should be included. Sure, on everything.
Yeah, the Gmail account is just captured, in fact, you're violating the Oregon public meeting law by having serial meeting.
But yeah, so.
But I think your 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 initial point of Gmail. Should be used for when there's communication between two members of the board, yeah, absolutely, that's a great practice. It's not required by law, but it's a great.
Which brings up.
Oh, no, sorry.
Which brings up, you know, Gmail may not be there forever, and I know that it tends to hurt, we probably. The human to ask them in their monthly. And put a copy of everything to the folder. Maybe date the, you know, June twenty twenty-three or whatever.
That's a poor stat.
But I didn't know, this is a suggestion too, because, you know, my email tends to not. You know, all the sales stuff I put down.
No, I just communication, go ahead.
I don't know what happens when everybody else opens up their Gmail account. But I can tell you online this morning, there were five hundred and forty-seven messages on that account. A lot of them are just garbage. Uh, somebody accepts or declines or whatever for a meeting, and on and on and on. Every time I, as as communications uh hurting for the board. Public relations, if I send out an email on that, it doesn't come from Danny, it comes from Ben with me. Uh, and so I have to make uh adjustments every time I send an email to somebody who's queried the site about an issue. And I have to make sure they understand, in fact, I think you and I were talking about something, I sent it from Gmail, and it came from Ken. Not, it actually came from me. And and nobody seems to be able to deal with that, so what we have is a cluster in this. This Gmail account that I don't think serves anybody very well, and maybe I'm seeing something different on my Gmail account than other people see. When they open up their emails. Do you all have five hundred and forty-seven messages on there that nobody has the courage to purge?
Yeah, same for sure.
Man, it's garbage. Man, it's garbage.
Yeah, that'd be really, that's the best practice question. That's, that's one that you want to have the. Communication discussion with your, your staff. It's not, not a legal issue. If you can't purge, as long as one copy is retained.
Well, and it should be one person does during the purging, I would think, rather than all of us having that discretion and, and we all have different sensitivities. As to whether it's appropriate or not appropriate. I mean, what I would throw away would be a whole lot more, for example, than my wife. She can't afford a Kleenex, so um. So maybe it's a policy issue, but we also need some help practically in terms of how that system is set up and why everything. Instead of the person writing the email.
We know who set it up.
Well, Sarah set it up.
But you, obviously you need somebody who is conditioned in that area to give you the best.
Silas and I had some communications about purging and, you know, and I know, and he's. Reticent to do that and appropriately so. Uh and that's why I asked the question here, because I don't want to put any other individual uh in jeopardy or feeling vulnerable. About their actions. I, I would just like to see it be a functional tool that we can give.
We have, we want to make sure it's appropriate, just to set up an archive folder, just put everything into that.
Yeah, well, I tried that, you know, there are some like, you can't even forward anything on a Gmail account, but it's simple. So maybe if you understand how to do that, that's great, but I don't, and I'd be happy to sit down with somebody who does know, so I can learn.
But whatever you come up with, you're, you're gonna want to have a document that this is what the authority's policy, it's gonna be announced on. And you don't want to make the person who has assigned that role. To, you know, obviously train, so they don't make that disruptive step of destroying something with this public record design free, right? Because there's penalties for somebody who destroys public records. You, you have an obligation individually to the um. They're making sure that anything that you've created comes to you alone for the authority is into the, of the record of your. For the, for the proper right to keep this possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh there's no duty to create a public record. So if somebody makes a public record request to you and they say. Okay, um I know that each month you've been talking about the project. I now want that put onto a matrix to show all the different steps that have been taken and where you're going. No, you don't have to create a matrix. You provide them the, the records that they've asked for, that you have in your possession, and they can create their own matrix. They cannot make a public records request that's forward-going. They can't say, for instance, I want all the records for two thousand twenty-three and. Every month I'm, I'm making a public records request now. Send me every month the board's. Materials. Now they can contain those another way. They can make a public records request the next month, the next month, the next, you can't make a, uh one.
So several of our board members have. You know, the city, they represent their email address.
Yeah.
They use that. Some of them have our personal. We don't have the government email. So what you're saying is we should be. Getting our NSA. Well, email address.
I'm not saying that, I'm not making that statement.
But you're not making the statement, but here's.
You know, because the uniqueness of your organization, that you have two representatives from each of the board jurisdictions. Using those city. Email addresses is appropriate, as long as all of the. Emails that came, that, that have been sent to and from those city email addresses about the authority to capture within the authority. I'm not sure how to do it, I'm not.
But that's, that's why you put on the Gmail account for the NSA Gmail.
Exactly.
Okay. But would it be better if the board has, all board members have, and NSA just email?
That'd be, that'd be a best practice because that would segment out the things that are distinct to your city work. And it puts you into a situation that you're being more diligent to separate the two.
But I don't think the board can afford. Cell, like, I mean, cell phones or laptops or.
But that would be your best practice, particularly if, if for some reason somebody sends out to you an executive session privilege piece of information. That's about the authority.
That's what I'm here to do.
Because I'm, I'm not sure which of your practices, but my practice as an attorney is when I go to an executive session, I bring them through paper. And I hand it out, and then usually I retrieve it and get them off. I don't let anybody walk out of room because I don't want them leaving it somewhere. If something is sent out electronically, and I've seen this done. The lawyer can't be at the meeting, so instead they send it electronically and they ask the recorder to distribute it. If something gets distributed to you at an authority meeting, maybe it's not today, because you're not at that level of activity, but it could happen.
Oh, yeah, come in.
So something comes to you at your email addresses and each one of you has your city email addresses. And it comes to you in an executive session that you're retaining it. And then for whatever reason, you're also dealing with your city reporters and they're saying, send me all the emails on your city. Email account. You could inadvertently send something that's authority related, gets into the city's. Files and then you've reached an obligation.
Yeah, but it's already the reasons, okay, no, I, I think you need to. Can't make the decision right now, it's a word there.
That's right.
Something to look at.
But you're in an awkward spot that when you're coming to your authority meetings, representing your city, you're learning something that's. Authority-related, that you don't have the third, I don't think you have. Absolute authority to then go and talk about it with the other members of your city council. You might be, you're giving reports, but if you've got something in an executive session for the authority. You don't have the, you don't have the legal authority to then share that with your fellow council members who have members of the authority. There's a fine line there. I don't quite figure it out. It's going to be challenging for you to, as, as you go down the road, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I've talked about this exemptions um to the. Public records, uh things, there are exemptions of items that are not reachable. Uh things like creative secrets, real estate appraisal information, unfair label practice complaints. Or you, you don't have to deal with a lot of these, these police-related issues, but there are certain things that you're going to obtain. As an authority that are not reachable for public records. That's when you're. City, that's when your staff member is going to want to make sure that they're uh properly keep. Properly releasing only the records that can do this. I don't know that you have a district council, but you might involve your elite council. Socials of government and individual authority. I added this item on page ten. I wanted you to all. Hear again, I'm sure you heard in the city council, like. Your authority rests in, in the cities and your authority rests with the charter gives you as authorities. But in a city situation, because you're all home rule, you have broad powers. You can do anything as a city that a city typically does unless it's against. Federal law or state law or it's preempted, right? So there's certain things that you can't do as a local government because it's preempted. By the state. For instance, you don't get to uh make. You, you, you can't uh create a tax unless it's allowed by the state. Why I want to talk about this is you're in a little different situation now as an authority, because in the authority, you don't have a charter. You have an ORS one ninety agreement. Which says that your authority is the power of scopes of services. Which is down on page two of the agreement and it talks about a lot of things related to sewer, because obviously what you're doing is you're. You're looking at the feasibility of establishing a sewer system, which involves establishing, collecting, enforcing P's, et cetera, et cetera. Then the next thing that is three point two that says you have authority to contract and provide services. Then you have authority to do some other services. And you have government authority, must acting compliance with all applicable authority laws. You don't have a whole lot of. Things that you can do. You're restricted to what the ORS one ninety agreements says you can do. So you can't decide that, for instance, you want to get into another venture, that you want to become the. The pre-service providers of the entire base, basically, you can't do that. You also don't have the ability to act independently. You only have authority to make decisions as a board. Unless the board delegates some authority to an individual. Now, I'm not sure how you operate, but that, that actually happens. I know you, I heard today in conversation that. You will have meetings where an individual will be, maybe you're the subject expert. Who's working with the engineer or with a consultant, so you're asked by the group to go. Do something on behalf of the authority and maybe because you only meet once every three months, if you have to give some broad powers to make some. Uh some decisions, not an ultimate decision, but to give some direction, if you're going plus A or plus B. If we get additional, do we expend additional funds to obtain a second opinion? You may delegate that authority to a member of your board. My recommendation to you is if you are going to delegate. Authority to some individual, that has to take place at a meeting of your body. And my recommendation is to do it by a vote. You be very clear as to what that authority is. So on the information I've given you here. I suggested on page eleven, a list of. Things that I would suggest you do when you grant authority to someone. If you're saying, member A would like you to be the person that carries forth for the next few months doing this for it. I would suggest you make sure it's clear what the assignment of the task is. What your board expectations are, what limitations you're placed on that individual. How much authority do they have to obligate the engineer to do an extra study? Or to potentially rent a piece of equipment that's necessary to do a study? What are the expected outcomes that you have? How and where um the authority may deli, may be exercised? For instance, um someone may be asked to represent the authority over the next few months. It's a legislative, it's a legislative is working on some house bill that's of interest to you. How much authority does that person have to go and represent the authority without coming back? And meeting with the entire authority and saying, hey, here's where we are, this is where the decision point is, here's what my recommendation is, what do you use? Authority want to do. So be very, very clear how much authority you give to someone. And also, what's the duration of the authority? Make it clear that you're only given this authority through the time that this house bill is adopted. Not after, because someone may be government powered. To think that, oh, I'm always the, the expert on such topics, so I can continue to pursue. This objective of the authority when in fact, you know, the game's over. So I'm suggesting that you only have authority to make decisions as a group. And unless you delegate to someone some special ability, and I know the presiding officer has some authority. Obviously to preside over the meeting, to maintain the decorum of the meeting, to keep the meeting going, to keep it on course. And sometimes the presiding officer has more discretion on formation of the agenda. Making decision that, well, we don't have enough information yet to put this on the agenda. So they may decide not to put something on, on the agenda. That instead of asking hold over for another couple of months or for a special meeting. I think it's important that you understand what your, your roles are. You make certain decision. You make legislative decisions when you're making the big decisions. You're also making decisions on awarded contracts. That's usually an administrative step, but if there's a challenge of an award of a contract. You're going to have to follow a process to resolve that dispute. I don't know, I didn't see anything in the board policies and procedures whether you've adopted. The uh state attorney, the attorney general's um process for procurements, I assume you have ORS two nine, two seventy-nine, A B S C. Um the attorney general's laid out a process for what you need to do to go into contracts, make purchases, buy services. You can create your own individual. Procurement process, if you want to have a higher level of authority, if you're staff, you have to purchase them. Or if you want to have a different process for resolving disputes. But whatever process you use, if there is a dispute of a contract that you award. You're going to be acting in a different capacity, you're going to be acting in a quasi judicial capacity. That's where you're going to be acting more like a judge or a tribunal. Where you are assigned the task. Of taking your rules and applying them to a specific set of facts. In a hearing context and generating a decision. Where you explain why you made your decision, so that someone can decide whether that decision is something they want to appeal into, into reports. So I know you don't have that situation now, but there, there could be the time that you're acting in the quasi judicial capacity. Mostly you're in an administrative capacity where you're giving direction you make in the series. Um there's ways to make decisions, uh you, you know all that, you've all dealt with them, where. You're, you're either in your city contact, you've got your ordinances and your resolutions, so assuming the board, if you make a decision, it's going to be a board order. Of some sort, I'm not sure what the other terminology, terminology would be. And obviously you make motions, motions of just, um something is said, this is what my motion is. And then ultimately, after the, there's a vote, it becomes whatever the decision is. So some information in here that define those. We already talked about forums, the other forum of this group. Is fifty percent of the seven members you have, so right now it's four. Four, but if you add that eight member, whatever jurisdiction is lacking, the second member. Send you their legal authority, their, their city council has voted to send so-and-so as the eighth person. That's, that's now your, your eighth person, now you're forms five. And you all know too, that that person walks into the room. For their first meeting, having the exact same authority of all the rest of you, regardless of the fact that they haven't been into it for two or three years, like most people have done. So they have the same vote, they can vote the very first meeting. They of course have the ability of that first meeting or another meeting to say, no, I just don't have enough information there. To really render my opinion, I trust your opinion. They can vote, but they also can refrain from voting. They can abstain. If you allow them to, and I don't see anything in your rules to say that if someone is going to abstain, that they have to do so by giving a full explanation of why. Maybe there is.
They're beginning to abstain. If they're, if they're knowledgeable on the topic, they can abstain. So, but if they not know, or they don't have enough information, they just recently learned about it. Then they can't vote. So by them being duly appointed by senior city council. Soon as they're appointed and you receive notice of that. That person is seated and they have the same voting rights as each and every one of you. They can't just, what I'm saying is, there may be a circumstance that they may feel uncomfortable and they may say, I need to abstain because of lack of technique. They don't have to. They should make that abstention position known early, as early as possible. And the best practice is, you know, at the beginning of the meeting or before he gives that dental, by the way, I'm going to abstain because I'm not qualified. The worst case scenario, I've seen this done in a land use context, is someone has said, I'm going to abstain because I. Don't have enough information. And then they sit through the meeting and then when it comes time to vote, they're read the tea leaves as to where the. Vote's gonna go and say, by the way, before there's a vote, I want you to know, I now have nothing, I'm gonna vote. That sure sets the public trust in the wrong direction.
What circumstances? Can you or should you not abstain?
Should you not abstain?
Yeah.
When your vote is needed to make a decision, for one. Uh, if there's um. Because you want the decision to be made in a timely manner, so that you're moving forward and doing all the right things. Um, you should vote when you have um. Enough information, so that you're, you've got a level of competency.
So because we've had a discussion and. And I don't like the way the discussions went and whatever, and I just don't wanna participate, I can't say I'm abstaining.
I'm sorry. Um, that that sounds like that's at the end of the discussion also.
Yeah.
And that's really difficult because then. You, a a person who does that places the rest of the group in a more awkward position. It's now all the group is going to them to make the difficult decision. And if you, if you, if your point is, I can't make up my mind. I've heard information on both sides, I just can't make up my mind, you guys go ahead and vote, I'm just not gonna vote. That's not good enough, the rest of the group should be saying, what more can we provide to you so that people can have a fuller um. Context to make their decision. Because again, when you're rep- all of you are representing your community, you're one of two votes from your community. So a vote that has. Two members from three communities, only one from the other, that's, that sends an awkward message too. And in fact, your fellow council members back in your your home city might question.
I haven't seen it here, but I have seen it, that's a maybe it's where, you know, I don't like this topic, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna abstain.
Yeah, and that's, that goes to even making that comment before the day. If you're gonna abstain before the age, having it that I don't like this topic, that one, just that's not good. Because you're 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 taking on the responsibility from your city to be their representative, and they're entitled to have.
So if you, go ahead, I was just gonna say, I believe I know the answer to this, but uh, so you have a forum. Say if the minimum was five to make forum, if we had a poll of eight. The majority of the forum present can pass the vote, so that's five, three people, you're only three yes votes to pass it.
Yeah, under your respect, great question, uh, a majority of the members present in the court. Can carry the day on any decision with the exception of modifying your rules. Because you specifically within your rules say that the rules can be changed by a semi bias. So super regarded, okay, but you could create other situations where you have a super regarded. If you wanted, I'm not suggesting it, but I've seen it done.
So if somebody's gonna abstain. And they make it known, and they participate in the discussion.
They should.
They should.
They should, if they're not, if they're not, if they're gonna abstain, they should not participate. Alright, so let's jump to the. The most. Important times to abstain, and that's when someone has a conflict of interest. Or a bias, bias, so these are all the very end of the document, but I jumped to that, because I know he's got, he's got time to say. But you are gonna have situations where you're going to be making decisions. Where you have to think personally whether your participation is proper. And when you're dealing with conflicts of interest. You have to be also concerned about the uh, Oregon ethics. Now, each of you is a city council member, you're looking at your S E I, is state and the economic interests, right? I was wondering on the drive down, you also get one because you're a member of the authority? Yeah, I don't know, so maybe you don't. Uh, maybe you don't, but I worry about that.
Yeah, because I was set up, so yeah.
Probably did, probably did, so you probably say, but I, I said to myself, I don't know the essence. Because especially the districts, obviously, they also have to go say in the school boards, so. Your situation for abstaining on the conflict of interest, conflicts of interest is two types of conflict of interest. But there is really a, a conflict of interest is defined by financial. This financial advantage or financial adhesion to your participation. So there's two types, there's actual and there's potential. Actual is you know that you have a conflict of interest, you know it is gonna affect you financially. And. The potential is, it's made. So made possibility, but it's definitely not a sure thing. So you've all, you're often, so you can also see in those land use contexts, right, so I can talk land use, and you're not gonna say I'm confused with. Land use decisions. Always involve an applicant asking for something. And usually when they're asking for something, it's for financial reason. You're gonna get to divide a piece of property and get two house lots instead of one, which means theoretically you're gonna have more profit than building your house. So when that person appears before the city council. The context is. Is the decision that city council is going to make tonight, not participating as a council member. Is that decision going to affect me financially? And we know that if. You have a piece of property that's exactly like the property that's in consideration tonight, saying there is a zone. Maybe it is possible, you might wanna do the same thing. If you find that the city council is willing to make those approvals. That might be an actual conflict of interest, because you've got the ability to make some money.
Possible.
Possible. But I'm raising, I'm a little up on that, it's a very good point, very good point. Or let's say this developer that appears before you, who wants to do this. Somebody who you bought a house from, and you still owe a little bit of money, side mortgage. And this person is really wants to get this approval because financially they need it. And there's a possibility that maybe though you reduce the amount that you owe, that's an active, that's. Now, potential conflict of interest might be where. This development proposal that is gonna, might, it might be good for the community, might not be good for the community, it's a mile away from my house. Well, if it's gonna impact me financially, that's a maybe. But in fact, if you all live in the community, you all have a residence, you all might have some potential impact. Then you might have what's called a classic section, everybody's affected the same, to the same level. But if you have an actual conflict of interest. You have to do the following. You have to declare that you have a conflict of interest at the meeting. At the beginning of the discussion about this idea. And you cannot participate at all. In the, in the decision. You can't participate by asking any questions, so here's what you typically do. The chairperson's going to read a script, we're now such and such item on the agenda for the slant use item. And now we're going to reset, does anybody have a conflict of interest, and I saw you, you all did a conflict of interest before you started me. Which I've seen cities and authorities do, that makes sense. But I think it's better that when you're actually having the decision. That you do have a conflict. Instead of having the conflict raised then, beginning with that. So for instance, your conflicts of interest might involve awarding a contract. Okay, so let's say you're gonna award a contract to some company that's gonna be some preliminary for. And you have a financial interest in that company. Or your son-in-law works for that company, that's high up in the. In your organization, then for working at more compensation at first guess. You might have an actual conflict of interest. Because the, as a public official, under the Oregon ethics rules. You're a public official, and you'll also see, and I'm sure you've seen it before, you've seen it later on, my materials is a list of. Who else is a public official in your family? Your spouse, your household, members, your child, your your grandparent. Those are all affected people too, they're all, in the context of lowering government ethics, they're all public officials. They all have the same limitation you have. So you have to have those people in mind as you're making the determination whether or not you have a conflict of interest, so if you do, you make the declaration. And then you say, and I am, because it's an actual conflict of interest, I'm not willing to participate in this meeting. And if I were you, I would then say, I'm not, I'm going to leave the room for this agenda. And if you're the chairperson, you turn the gavel, someone else, and you do. In a potential conflict of interest, you get to make the decision. Now, in both contexts. Actual and potential, it's your obligation to make these declarations, nobody else. It's not the city's obligation, it's not the authority's obligation, it's your obligation. Because you're gonna be held accountable to go wrong. So in an act, in a potential conflict of interest. You make a similar declaration, I believe I have a potential conflict of interest. You also have to say why. So in an actual conflict of interest, you're saying why, I know, uh, I have a financial uh, interest, blah, blah, blah. So I'm not gonna participate, actual conflict, potential conflict of interest, rather. You also have to make the declaration. And you might have to say, well, I own a piece of property. That I think could be influenced by this, if this is granted or denied, it could influence the value of my property. But I think it's a little, it's not, it's not an actual context, so I plan to participate, and that's your right. It's clear as the time. Or the next step in the proceeding is, does anyone in the chairperson's system, does anyone in the audience wants to challenge the participation of any member of the. Governing body, or any declarations of conflict of interest or bias? Does anyone want to challenge that? And that's when a member of the public can get up and say, well, I heard cows, uh, member, board members say. Say this, but I think it's more than that, I think it's accurate. I didn't see anything in your rules, because you you don't deal with conflicts of interest too much in here, but. You might wanna be thinking about having a process, what do you do when somebody's challenged? And some jurisdictions have a process that if somebody's challenged, it immediately moves into what's the rest of the great thing. But sometimes, if it's silent, you still might get to that. But it's somewhat uncomfortable to the governing body. To say, we're all gonna rule on. Would never so and so. It's not clear, that would remember me saying, wait a minute, is my word good enough? I said it's. Potential, I've just heard what that person said, it's still potential, I'm gonna participate. So it's clearer if you have a process in your rules to say, if there is a challenge of the justification, so. That is the following process. The chair allows the person to answer the challenge. After that person answers the challenge, the remaining members of the board will vote whether or not they want to allow that person to be seen, and we make a record. Any conflict of interest declarations need to be made out of minutes. They need to be made out of the public record. So if you make a declaration, you wanna make sure when those draft minutes come back, that your declaration is recorded there. What more is, oh, so I I mentioned the word bias, but I didn't buy it, so bias is different from conflict of interest. Conflict of interest is always financial related. Bias is first. Bias might be personal relationships. Bias might be this person coming before the board who wants the contract that we're going to award. Was presenting, saying, I really want this contract bad. If you have a bias, because you've been friends all these years, or you have business feelings, you're gonna wanna make a declaration. And say, I believe I have a bias. And maybe you don't participate because of that bias. There isn't anything that says, wait, wait, you're sanctioned if you. Have a bias and don't declare it. But it calls into question the legitimacy of any decisions of good ones, particularly because the public knows about the legitimacy, they see it. Um. The bias is different because it's not, it's not. Um. Okay, so it looks like I might have ten minutes left.
Okay, love it.
So I've covered what I wanted to. You know, were you, what, didn't I cover, was there anything that was talked about that I missed?
So I've always been a little confused as to. What our obligation is to our own city council in the decision-making process. You know, if there's something that seems like this is a big deal. I maybe I should hear what my council thinks about this. How am I supposed to deal with that?
Great question, and I think that that's, you're gonna have four different answers. What does your individual city expect to do when they delegate to you? The role being one of their, the city's two representatives. And I don't know what's happening at your cities, whether. Each city has said, well, we're gonna send two proponents of this whole project, or that we're gonna balance it, and we know that. Councilor A, Councilor D have different points of view, so we wanna have both sides represented. For our community and the authority. It's gonna come down to what your council expects. I think the best practice is that you have that conversation when you're given the delegation. That you're a city. What does it, what does the city want me to do? How often do you want me to report? How long is my leash? Of being able to take actions on behalf of the authority. When do I have to report back to you, council first? And I think the initial. Answer to that for all of you is gonna be, we don't know what the authority is gonna be doing. Until we move along further down the road, so I think every one of your councils is probably gonna be very conservative. And they're gonna say, we trust you, but we want you to keep us informed. And then they say. In every meeting of the city council, we wanna have an update from you, and we wanna have. Every material that's ever handed to you, we want it handed to, to the city reporter and made available to all the members of the council, or. It might be, I just don't, I'm not interested in suing things, so I trust you, and if that's said by all of the other members of the city council. They might give you. Appearance of having. A broad, a whole authority. But just as I said earlier, that I believe that a a member of the board is delegated by the board to have some authority, I would ask for the same clarity. At the local government, because what you don't wanna have happen is that the authority makes a decision. And now that the authority's decision becomes public. Members of the public agree about it, before there's another city council meeting, before you have the chance to get back to your city council and tell them what happened. And next thing you know, there's a big bruhaha, because this, now you're asking. You obviously want the council to support your decision, because your decision is an informed decision made. Follow what you know is your authority. But it's not gonna be easy. Particularly because I believe each of your cities only meets, there's a council once a month, right? And you're, you're the authority's meeting now four times a year, this is a lot of gaps there. There's a lot of potential for things to be lost.
We actually had this discussion, and it's just as you described, the council said, you know, keep this informed. And instead of Ken reporting, uh, when he was, I think, the only NSA board member at the time. Um, he would make a report, once I was on the city council and became involved, and I took that over from Ken. And the council simply said. Keep us informed and uh, we'll support you on whatever you do.
But that that works, and that will work, real point, but that requires me know that personalities change on city council, so you gotta wanna get. Confirmation of that again, each time this is changed over the city council. One of the things I recommend on your board policy rules, by the way, is that your board policy rules get reviewed every time that there is a changeover. So maybe every year, you look at these rules to make sure they work for you, same is true for when somebody's been delegated authority. You wanna make sure that the newbies to the process also understand what the. Commitment has been made by the authority representative, and what authority was given to them by the council, because it can be tweaked and changed, the course.
Sure, makes sense.
Sure, makes sense. Anything else? So, we had a rather lengthy discussion in this past year about. What if a municipality is not. Able to have both their delegates, you could say that. What, what can the sewer authority do to make sure that. That there's eight people on our board, if that's what we say is supposed to be on our board. We've talked about a variety of options, but we didn't come to a consensus on it.
It doesn't sound like the authority has any. Uh, ability to compel a city to assign second person instead. It just says that each city has the ability to assign two members. Let's see if I can find that, see if there's some language that helps to secure.
It's, it's pretty hard in, in Sunday, you know, in these poor communities, the volunteers, and sometimes takes a while to get. Somebody to volunteer to the position, so.
Well, the member that's missing is from Idana, and Tony Marino's, Marino's?
Maron's.
Maron is, uh, is our representative now, and as part of my report, every month, I. Really thought the need for another volunteer from Idana and this one weekend when we have the derby. And all things going on, I, I met a new person on the boards of the fire authority in Idana. And I shared the same information with her, Chris Mauer. Uh, and so, you know, I don't know what else you can do. We actually had a discussion where we talked about simply appointing someone from one of the other. Communities, but still that position on an ad hoc basis, until we could have an Idana resident. Take over the position, but as you said, I don't, I don't think we thought very much of that idea.
So, you're, you're bound by the language that's in your ORS 190 agreement, and I know that Christie Monson wrote this, Christie, but. Very highly got, she knows, she's, she's an expert on district and authority funding. So, what she wrote in here. Was to help you to show how serious need is to each, or each community have representatives. But she went, she felt sure of, and I, I say that not in a critical way, because it's impossible. She knows that the authority only have the ability to compel a local government to choose their representative. Here's what language says it. The board shall be comprised of two representative directors from each part, shall is mandatory. So, you, you have linked to this mandatory there that's comprised of two. But, still, your local councils action. I've interpreted charters with the city council where there is language that say shall, but if they can't, if the council can't make a decision. Well, it gets moved on to the next meeting, next meeting never gets done. And that's apparently what's happened here. The authority is independent. And the authority voted directors shall act in accordance to the best interests of the authority as a whole. And according to the collective authority's best interest. So, that's your responsibilities, board member, to act on behalf of the authority for its best interest. One of the things that you're doing is you're reminding this other entity each month that. You are a member of this group. Your participation is necessary for it to be a full new analysis and buy-in. Both in the decision-making and for the community at large. Because if a city doesn't have someone to participate for a longer time, when it comes to the difficult decisions. Is there going to be the, the communication that's created so the community has that thought? But you don't have anything here that can tell you, you can just keep reminding folks.
Yeah. So, is there a point in which that, that community could block movement forward? Based on a bit better feeling that they have a representation of that, but later, um, on the board?
I would say no, I think the only way that they would be able to block movement is if they have less than, appoint one or two individuals who come and, I'll take that as votes. And their votes, uh, help to turn, to turn the tide. You don't have the ability, excuse me, you don't have the ability under this. Language, you're applying an interim from another community.
But we do not have the authority.
You do not. The only appointment is going to be two from each part, not three, not an interim.
Great point, thank you.
Well, you say keep reminding them, hopefully.
Well, you know, and I, I don't want to spend ninety-eight percent of the time worrying about two percent of the problem. So, if they don't, if they don't have a, an effective way to recruit within their community, that's their issue. And, uh, come on, if you want to, if you want to resist us and, and try to change the minds of seven hundred people, I.
I think all that you can do is worry about. Yeah, I think all you can do is continue to make note of that, the significance. Of the activities that you're involved in and the key decision points that are coming along. And if there's any way that you can say, hey, we're anticipated in six months and nine months and twelve months of. This is when some critical decision is necessary and be really helpful for you. As your community, to have the most up-to-speed individual making that decision for you. All you can do is, is state the realities. And I represent that city, so I said that as your, uh. Your, uh, district council for the, uh, for the con, not as their.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the record, uh, Tim Kirsh did arrive at the meeting at two o'clock this afternoon. Now. I turned, you know, turned it over to Chair Purge.
Wow, thank you very much, and thank you for opening for me. Sorry, I want to get a little bit of work today. As quick as I could. Anyway, so.
Follow the speed limit.
Right.
So, are we about to take a regular, this is a bladder test? Everybody else may get up and running as the. The I F D with the Grand County update. And Chris, I believe you're on deck.
Can I turn it over to Keller and get theirs first?
Oh, okay. Okay. Urban. We're going to go to item E on the agenda.
Okay.
We have a new person here.
I don't mind a cameo, but.
Never met him.
Okay, thanks so much, Sam. Uh, well, thank you so much for having us here. I wanted to provide an introduction to wastewater treatment. I'm Cam Vieri Allen from Keller Associates. Along with Peter Olson, um, he's the project manager, um. Wanted to, uh, kind of give you a very basic background and introduction into, uh. What we're working on behind the scenes as we move forward with this project, so.
Great talk, Peter. Was that great talk?
Um, so what is wastewater? Well, wastewater is water that's been affected by domestic, industrial, and commercial use. So, in other words, it's used up water, and, um. There was, there've been some studies done that I thought were very interesting that, uh, a couple of years ago, that globally, um. There's about three hundred and fifty-nine billion cubic meters wastewater produced annually. Which is about the equivalent of about a hundred and forty-four million Olympic-sized swimming pools. And a good percentage of that is released untreated into the environment. And why is that an issue? Um, wastewater contains pollutants, uh, that can consume oxygen in our environment, uh, receiving waters. It contains pathogens, uh, bacteria, viruses, et cetera, that can make people sick. Along with, uh, nutrients such as, uh, nitrogen and phosphorus, which act as like a fertilizer for plant. Because they are required by all living organisms, and so you can, uh, develop these, uh. Excessive alcohol blooms that can produce toxins, that can further degrade the, uh, receiving waters in an environment. So, it is an issue, um. It's really important, uh, in order to treat wastewater or to protect our, uh, environment, the health of humans, animals. Um, and so, how do we do that? Um, wastewater objectives in terms of treatment are, we want to make sure we're improving the quality of the wastewater and raw sewage. Uh, we want to make sure we're eliminating any pollutants, toxicants. We want to make sure we're preserving water quality as a natural water resource, that this water is now being reintroduced to. Um, we want to make sure that that wastewater can be usable for other purposes. You know, water is a limited, uh, resource. So, we want to do everything that we can to preserve our fresh water supplies. We also want to prevent, uh, spread of harmful diseases. So, wastewater treatment, uh, can be broken down into a number of steps, um. It includes physical, chemical, and biological processes to break down pollutants in the waste. Uh, these, we'll go through step by step, but, um, these are the preliminary and primary treatments. Secondary treatment, and then tertiary and advanced treatment. So, in preliminary and primary treatment, which tends to be the first step in wastewater treatment. Is that you have the wastewater flow come in to a centralized location, and then it is screened for debris. We want to remove, it's a physical step, where we're removing solids from the liquid. Um, and we want to be able to do this because that debris can clog or coat equipment. It can cause. Um, issues operationally, um, and it also is, it doesn't create a clean waste stream. So, um, it's a very, uh, that's the very first step. Go to the next slide, please. Um, so, we accomplish this by using screens, much the same way that you want to strain something out of something that you're cooking. You take, uh, coarse screens can remove large solids, rags, and debris from wastewater. And then you can also use a finer screen that can target smaller debris. Um, that those solids are hot on the bars and screens as the wastewater is flowing through in a channel. And then it is removed, it can get caught on the bars, can be manually removed. There is automated equipment as well. And then that, uh, debris is, uh, landfilled, uh, and thrown out and removed completely. And now what you're left with is, uh, primarily, uh, liquid waste. The next, or I guess the second half of that preliminary treatment is grit removal. And so, grit includes, there are much smaller particles, sand, gravel, um, organic such as eggshells. Seeds, coffee grounds, rice, um, all, all of that can get caught in, uh, a grit trap. Um, the grit tech removal process tends to target anywhere from fifty to a hundred and forty mesh. So, um, that mesh measurement is how many openings there are in a one-inch, uh, square. And so, you know, the higher the mesh, the finer this, this screening process. Um, from this, uh, grit removal, uh, it, we want to be able to do this because. As that grit makes its way through the treatment process, and as, uh, the waste stream slows down. Um, it can deposit in different areas of the treatment process and equipment, causing operational issues. Causing wear and tear under equipment. So, it is a very, very important step.
It runs all the mixing crannies in the treatment.
Yeah.
And stays there.
And yes. So, um, let's see where, okay. Uh, the second half, uh, well, I guess, of the first step here is the primary, uh, sedimentation. And in this stage, you slow your wastewater flow down, and usually by accumulating it in a tank. And allowing those sediments to flow and settle. And, uh, what accumulates at the bottom is called sludge. Um, and, uh, the clarified liquid on the top then can flow over a weir, which is like a little, um. They flow over the edge, and that can proceed on to the next steps of the process. Okay. Um, now, we're moving from the physical treatment where we separated the solids from the liquid. And now we're moving into the biological treatment. So, biological treatment, um, in secondary treatment, it's. Bacteria and other small organisms that are present in the wastewater, um. They consume a lot of these pollutants, uh, with the help of air and oxygen. And so, there are a number of different ways to accomplish this, and that's part of what our facility planning study is looking at, is the different types of technologies available to. Um, uh, to, uh, renew, uh, the pollutants of concern. Uh, these pollutants of concern primarily are biological oxygen demand, total pedal, nitrogen, nitrates, and total suspended solids. The biological oxygen demand, um, measures the amount of oxidable organic materials in the water. So, that's naturally present, you know, human waste, animal waste, food scraps, et cetera. And when that waste, um. Comes into a receiving water, the bacteria, say, it's a food source. And so, they can consume that with the help of oxygen, uh, but it also, as that consumes the, uh, the, the. The organic material, it also. Utilizes all of the dissolved oxygen in that surrounding area. And as it does that, then that causes the dissolved oxygen to, to degrade the water surface, the water. And receiving water, uh, further, and, uh, we don't want that because that affects the biology of the receiving stream. Fish, um, animals, uh, plants, et cetera. Um, total suspended solids would want to be able to remove that because excess sedimentation can clog rivers, waterways, et cetera. So.
I would add here too, the ammonia is a key thing, because we're doing, looking at rapid infiltration basins, so groundwater disposal. Um, and having that infiltrate, and ammonia is a key constituent when you're looking at groundwater quality. A key item, a constituent of concern that the DQs can be very sensitive to. So, amongst all the other ones that are important, ammonia and, and not degrading the groundwater further with that is going to be, uh, a key concern.
Thanks. Um, two additional, um, constituents of concern are, uh, phosphorus and, uh, nitrogen as well. Those are, uh, nutrients that we talked about earlier that, uh. Are required by every living organism, and, uh, when they are provided in access to an environment, can cause. The plant life to grow, uh, rapidly, and that can cause a lot of, um. Excess sediments, uh, in your water, in receiving area, along with, um. Toxic alcohol balloons, which produce toxins that can affect, again, fish, wildlife, people, humans, et cetera. So, these are all things that we try to, uh, address as part of the biological treatment process. So, it works where, um. The wastewater now has had bulk of its solids removed. It moves into an aeration tank where air is introduced to the wastewater via diffusers typically. And, um, in a, uh. And in this process, the air and oxygen feed the microbes along with the organic material. They, those microbes clump together, and then they settle out, and they. Create what's called an activated sludge, and then that activated sludge can then be reintroduced. Uh, it's kind of like this little starter for the next batch that come through. And so, there are a number of different technologies that can, and if you go to the next slide here.
I was, I was just going to mention those diffusers, what's creating the air in that, in that photograph there. It's like a, a shower head for air. So, you take a shower, put it upside down, and it makes it fine bubbles that, that. The more fine you make those bubbles, the easier and more it dissolves into the water. And so, it transfers the air to the water, which is all part of the biological process.
Um, so what we tried to do is locate, um, wastewater treatment plants that are. Within the vicinity that have similar technologies as to what we're looking at and considering. Within the vicinity that have similar technologies as to what we're looking at and considering for um as part of this uh project. Um Lincoln City and Staten have what are called sequencing batch reactors, uh which is a type of activated sludge process. Where it's a singular basin that fills with wastewater, um aerated. Um and then allowed to settle, uh and then. It's drawn down, the the treated water is drawn down and then it fills again. Um and so it's a sequence and a cycle. Um membrane bioreactors and are very similar type of process also where um air and oxygen are introduced into a uh. Bioreactor and then that treated water isn't pushed through a membrane filter to help. Um retain and separate out uh sludge biomass and it produces a much higher quality. Effluent, uh two other additional uh treatment processes we're looking at and trying to locate. The more plants are conventional activated sludge and an oxidation ditch, which also are similar. This is a picture here of a plant in Wyoming, um that's an oxidation ditch where it's a, the flow. Moves around in a circular or an oval-like pattern and um air is introduced by aerators or fresh aerators. Um and then sludge uh continues to form and uh the process continues on.
Is this is built contained plant we're looking at? And it's completely takes care of the wastewater for, let's just say, Lincoln City. How large is that property in acres?
That is probably about a two to three acre property.
That doesn't seem very large.
Yeah, so you'll see what these sequence batch reactors are, all the process, biological process happens in one tank. So the footprint is much smaller. You look at a conventional activated sludge system, you're gonna have tank to tank to tank. It takes a much bigger footprint, not exactly, you know, ideal for what we're looking at for your system here. Because of that footprint.
When you say system here, you're speaking of Mill City.
Correct, yeah.
What about Detroit, which has issues with land mass? You know, I mean, this looks absolutely perfect for.
No, that's it, I'm I'm agreeing with you, I'm making your point, is the conventional activated sludge with the bigger footprint. It it's, it's not used as much anymore because of, you know, property acquisition and space that are required. But when you get to a much larger system, we're talking Salem, we're talking Mills. Doing C S B R, sequence batch reactor, membrane bioreactor is is not, is not good, it's so expensive. Because of the the high flows. Oxidation, the oxidation ditch process has proven to be kind, it kind of bridges the gap a little bit. You can use it for smaller systems and and you can be okay with the footprint. Um but really, uh membrane bioreactor and and sequence batch reactor, small footprint, high quality. Um and it's, it's what you need.
Really should be looking at up in our, in Detroit Idana area to do the back. We're right there to San Diego, period.
Irregardless, whether it's Mill City, Idana, you're gonna have to put out high quality uh effluent water. And so because of that, and we would like to. Uh target, we're probably getting, this is getting out of the high level explanation, but we're, we would like to target. Treatment technology that's going to be used for both. Because if you change technologies, you're asking operators that may be in the same organization or or maybe not. That's not my, uh, we're talking about that, I'll leave that to others, but. To, i- i- it requires additional training, additional knowledge, additional capability, more staff, and that's becoming very tough.
Part of the system, as I understand, is I operated all these back east, we had higher water flows, more dilution post. Uh so dilution post is really what drives a lot of it, nitrates and your total suspense solids or your bio and all that kind of stuff, right? So size and then what you're putting it into, whether it's round or evaporation or whatever, yeah. So that's part of the whole system is is the environment that exists in, or is that correct?
Yeah, and and what we're dealing with here is if we're not discharging to the river, that's not happening. Uh but we still have to make it negligible as a wastewater product before it theoretically would hit the river. And so we're, we're dealing with all those, it's a unique, uh it's a unique situation.
Real quick, Peter, so I know that we're targeting right now or looking towards a mechanical plant. We have what a steg system or step system here. So the mechanical plants, this represented of the mechanical plant thing. And uh so we use uh intertupper tanks at each household, right? So are those still gonna be a crucial part of the mechanical treatment?
So you're mi- you're mixing collection and treatment, but I understand why, because your system is mixed. And so it's, it's totally understandable, step or steg is a part of the collection, but it is part of the treatment. Because of the evolution of your system, right? And you have a recirculated gravel uh or gravel. Recirc- recirculated gravel filter bed, uh your system, it's a very basic system, kind of a a a uh it's, it's an older. I wouldn't even call it technology concept, but it relies, your system relies on those septic tanks. To pull out the bulk of the solids.
So mechanical won't rely on those?
It will not rely, in fact, it it thrives on higher uh solids, but I will clarify. We're not changing, we're not, and you know, the target was not to change your s- your septic tank systems.
But new uh new builds.
New bills could connect, and this is what we're analyzing right now in the facilities plan, is what areas of town should connect by. By gravity to the new mechanical plant because they don't need to go through the existing or old system.
Right, so so but I mean, so like new developments might not need septic tanks.
Might not. Gates is all gravity, no, no tanks. We, we actually want to take as much solids from them as we can, because it helps the biological process, we call it feeding the system. It it, it needs that biological, that that, those solids and the the nutrients and everything that's coming in because it thrives. It's, 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 I'm not gonna profess, I understand all the details, because I'm not processed. Pam will know a lot more than me and 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 Dallin and those folks. But it's, it's a, it really is a biological process where it requires it feeds and it eats and it and it uses the air, uses the nutrients, and it's a balance.
So one of these systems, the one in Coburg, actually, they actually do have a step that then, and and that then. Once the solids are sort of removed, uh and even each individual property, then flows to the main brain bioreactor for further treatment. And then discharge, so that was one that we felt was very um, would be very valuable for us to have you visit.
Those are all mechanical plants.
Correct. The only, the only ones that really aren't mechanical are are some of your traditional septic systems and drain field. Which are individual systems, but then you have your lagoon systems. Uh so you have facultative lagoons, uh and then you have kind of bridging the gap there, you have aerated uh lagoons that are. Using a biological process, just like the facultative, but they're, you're providing air to it, so those are not considered mechanical plants. They don't have tanks, they don't have, you know.
Uh, wh- once that's good, once that's all treated. Does that get pumped up to a drainage field?
Good segue, good segue. We're, we're getting to the next slide.
Yeah.
One, one real quick, and I have you touched on algae blooms and stuff, can I come from the the nitrate supply? Things like that, so the.
So I would be very careful. We don't have data that says it comes from that location, and this is. What algae blooms come from nutrients. Too much nutrients in the, in the water that it's, it's a whole bu- another biological system. Again, we don't have data. Of cour- it comes from somewhere.
So it rains ninety-eight inches a year and it's all down deal, I guess where it ends.
No, great questions, appreciate it.
So um from, uh once you've now removed the solids, uh your preliminary and primary treatment processes. Completed your biological step. Uh sometimes, primary and secondary treatment, they don't always meet the final effluent requirements of your permit. Or of the ultimate uh usage uh that uh is intended. And so tertiary treatment may be required at that stage. Um this can be accomplished via um adding a coagulant that can then further remove sol- uh phosphorus. For example, or um or uh through a sand filter, a clot filter, a mem- membrane filter. And then um, you know, after tertiary treatment, then it moves into disinfection. And that's where typically chlorine or ultraviolet disinfection is used uh to either. Kill the pathogens that are remaining or uh make them inactive. And so that it is safe to discharge on uh via treated wastewater. There, so this is uh two examples, chlorine um can be applied. Got, there's gas form of liquid, um and then tablet forms. There's also uh UV radiation here, uh which a number of our most recent systems that they're using. UV system have converted over in chlorine.
More, more and more systems in Oregon will be going to this because of the chlorine, chlorine residual. Sorry, I haven't got when I'm talking right there. The chlorine residual uh is, is getting more and more, it's ha- happening to be lower and lower in the state of Oregon. And so many of the systems around that are doing upgrades are uh having to be very careful. A, an almost zero discharge of any chlorine at all, and so what you put in for dispe- disinfection, you then have to pull out. And I say pull out, it's another chemical you add that then uses up the chlorine and then, uh it's, it's. I see the looks, it's kind of, it's kind of an interesting process. It is, and that's where, that's why ultraviolet, you be, you know, uh disinfection has a lot of benefits.
But ultraviolet is a, is a light bulb.
Electricity costs can be uh. But then, you know, you're not paying for, you know, generation flooring either. So it, you know, it depends, that's part of the process and evaluation in terms of determining the technology that can be used and evaluate all of those costs.
Growing surplus water for drinking water, the wells, we eliminated a lot of chlorination and a lot of coagulating stuff. You'd be required of power, would that be solar to supply to divide that?
Where it comes from, it it can be, come from wherever you wanna provide it, but it has to be a sure source. And so solar, you know, alternative sources of of power are gonna be more and more uh realistic. Well, generator backup or connections with the the grids, obviously, yeah, but. They're getting better and better about, you know, those panning out, and there's also uh ones that has been brought up over, over the years. We've talked with the board and others and staff is, you know, hydro generation. And so, you know, it's one we actually talked about when we had the um. Facilities planning study uh work session, the, the review this last time, uh someone brought that up. And that coming from Gates to Mill City, once you get over the hill, well then it's all, it's all uh potential energy going down. And so we would look at, d- does that pan out? You know, does that make sense, or do you lose enough in your e- efficiencies and and it's, doesn't work? So that's something we'll be looking at, that it can be a source, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't assume it's gonna be a large, you know, source of power. But it would go back into the grid, you'd get credit, it could be used, all, all good things.
So as part of the master plan, uh different uh ways to discharge the wastewater were evaluated. Most people here have heard of the three basin rule, which uh is, it puts limits on the waste discharges in the north. Santia, McKenzie, and Clackness Subriver Basin. Uh that means that uh no new or increased wastewater discharge to the service water um is allowed. Uh and so discharging via groundwater infiltration. It can adversely affect the groundwater quality, and so one of the things that is being evaluated right now is just um. Distance to rivers, uh groundwater, um part of our evaluation at this moment to.
I still see, or is it still going to go, is it came with, that the road, where we showed it? Is it still gonna go online?
We're evaluating the different alternatives, don't, don't put too much in that.
You know, we were all talking, we had talked about Marion County on the Marion County side.
Correct, we're looking at all three of those, there's actually three, there's one south, two north, one's on the railroad, one's on the highway. Uh we're doing the like, you know, cost estimate and like, you know, uh 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 pros and cons and all that, putting that together before the next meeting.
Um so the disposal method that were uh. That was sort of, I think it's cradle times or look at, it, that we're looking at more closely. Um from the mass implant are rapid infiltration basins, um and so those are uh earthen basins that are permeable. And uh they, they are operated by uh repeatedly flooding them. The treated wastewater, allowing them to infiltrate down to groundwater, allowing it to dry and then. Repeating that process again.
It's not fancy. This is, this is not a super science, you know, scientific method, it's let it infiltrate.
So the water going into this rapid infiltration base, it is basically treated to a class A already, right?
It is treated wastewater, yeah.
So, but we're looking at it because of the three basement role having a very high.
Yep, that's what we're evaluating. Yeah, we're evaluating that, we can get into that, but I don't think that's a rabbit hole, we probably should go down.
People are saying that they, they, and when you say you're putting in these ponds, they, they think that that's what it is in the sewage pond. And uh friends don't know it's a class A water, it won't be smelled, there won't be any. Any adverse effect to the environment or.
I'd rather call it affluent than sewage. Recycle, recycled, recycled moss, recycled water.
It will have been through the treatment process. Yeah, and disinfected, right, so you know, at, at this stage.
Yeah, clean water is.
They call, they don't, they don't call wastewater treatment plants that anymore, they call them uh, what is it called? Reclamation facilities.
None of this water, this is not clean, pretty good enough to be a irrigation water or some.
It actually could.
There are other uses for it potentially, if that were in.
Yes, poten- potentially, but as I've said. A number of different times throughout this, these years here, you have to have this disposal method. It's a solid foolproof disposal method before you look at any reuse.
Don't build a golf course yet.
You can, you can build it, just maybe supplying it with water from somewhere else. Cause if it's, and what, what, what uh Mayor Kersh is talking about here is, is the. Recycled class A water, and this is class A per Oregon DEQ. So that class A is not a synonymous term, every, every state you go to, they have different, you know, terminology. And what they allow for class A is, is, is to be used on irrigation in where humans are at.
You can't put it on the actual vine, but you can put it in the ground where it feeds the vine.
No, you can actually put class A water, you can for.
Certain crops.
No, that, that's what I was reading before, what we're talking about, if you can put it in, you can irrigate it, but you can't actually put it on. The plant or. Yeah, you can put it into the ground.
You actually, you, for class A, you can use it for watering.
They changed it since they're.
Potentially. Like I said. That, that wine grows, that, those grapes grow really well for some reason.
You know, you can do it for for, for nurseries.
Yeah, exactly.
Vineyards, you can do it for all that, but my, okay.
And what you're saying is actually, I don't, what you're saying may be true. I need to go look at the nuance of the class A and make sure, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna make you feel like cause
I've read it enough, you know how long I've been doing this.
I do, I do. Those nuances of class A, class B, class C, you know, they, they kind of mix and mingle. And and so I want to, I don't want to say something that's not a hundred percent true, so.
Cause the water is gonna be very important here.
Yep.
Pretty quick, so.
Once you establish this disposal method, then you can find other uses for it. And that's great, that's phenomenal.
Fighting fires and
Yeah, whatever, maybe.
Yeah, so, yeah, cool.
Uh breweries, you know.
Well, I don't know if I want to do that.
Alright, next slide.
They do have, uh, the Washington gallon, they do make beers, they sell it to own brewers. And they do make their beer out of
They, they may treat it a little bit more.
Yeah.
I mean, just the, the process itself does.
Yeah. We have a significant number of properties that are below the street level.
Yeah.
So. How does gravity work in that?
You go deeper with the uh the main. So the mains are not at, you know, for water lines, thirty inch minimum cover, right? And for, for Oregon Health Authority. But, and I think, I actually know where you live, so.
That is a, the water
You're, you're gonna have an, an individual pump to send it up. Unless we can route it down to the water treatment plant and and have it then pumped up by an individual uh grinder pump, they call that, or a individual uh pump. They're gonna be, you know, if you read the master plan, there are certain portions of the town that will require that. Because we felt that would have been a better approach as opposed to a, a larger lift station. Um but there is going, there are going to be individual homes that will have to pump out.
Street level, provided over work, it leaves about ten foot off to the street lines.
Yeah, and we'll do, as we're putting the collection system concepts together right now in the facilities plan, we're, we, we're looking at, we want to look at that and say, where does it make sense to drop the main versus, sorry, we're gonna have to have a individual pump out.
Most of the properties are right on the and so it's buried, there's most of that Linwood Street on in South Gates.
Yeah.
And you have people that are above the street. Significantly below us, so.
Yeah, it's a balance, so we're, we're working through that.
Appreciate that, yeah.
How deep did you actually put your question, Mike?
Oh, you, I wouldn't go much, I've seen twenty feet, but I don't like that, that's dangerous. I mean, you gotta send, if you have to send a The, the problem with twenty feet in gates, especially in Detroit, is rock. I mean, I know three, I know one foot, six inches below, you got boulders the size of cars in gates, I've seen them. It's expensive, it's dangerous for future maintenance. Um you send someone twenty feet down in a manhole, it's, nobody wants to go down there. Um and so nobody will go down there, and so it won't get maintained. Um and so, and aside from other, you know, you have to start actually getting the geotag and structural involved for manholes that deep and and different considerations.
Lead to a lot of question, me if you're gonna put a pump on my recovery down here, pump it up, how do you go power it? What's gonna happen if the cables, you gotta drive to the back, what do you learn, you have check valves, so I can have a switch to my drain field.
Yeah.
You know, how does that?
You, you, if you're connected with the main system, you will not have a connection with your drain field.
Impossible, well, that will tell a lot of favors that might
You, you will, you will not be allowed to have a connection to your drain field. Uh once you commit, it's, it's separate. It's a community system. It's a community system that um that you have to keep separate, it, it can't go to an individual drain field at that point. Nope, if you do, it will be an illegal, illegal connection. That's where, that's where we'll have to address in the design process of how that's gonna work. Cause I, I validate your concern, but you, you cannot connect it to your drain field, so.
Listen, everybody's up to your green.
Yeah, I wish, I mean, very practical approach, I understand what you're saying, but it, it's, it won't be allowed.
Infiltration base, it looks like we're examining or something, we didn't prove that. Hundred with, yeah, no swimming, no, no fishing, no swimming, no dive.
Somebody will jump the fence and goes swimming and it's just I was just hearing, but I can say like, it's approaching the county, I'm sure that it's not a ten minute conversation, but it is catching on public that you're, that you have asked for, um, up in the town, so. With your approval or your approval, we'll, we'll stand with daily.
Talk fast and
No. Sorry.
That's okay, no, very good. We're getting started, thank you.
Okay, uh so with that, I'll come, now that everybody in the audience are wastewater experts. We want, uh by the way, this was a ton of information, very thanks. But this is all really, really good background for what we're doing here. Um so I will lead into this, and I will say, by the way, on that um last topic about uses, uh Arizona State actually does have a direct affluent to brewery program. And if you want to talk about getting public acceptance of wastewater, come to the Arizona Water Conference and see a whole room full of engineers and a project giving away free beers at a conference. At the reception.
Yes.
Yeah, then they've got the eight dollar ones that were off to the side and see how quickly people accept the idea of wastewater. But, you know, we're not, we find that situation where wastewater is precious here, um not like in water division states where they're fighting over it, but we have a lot of rules about wastewater protection. And so that's what's made a lot of the challenges in this project. So I'm gonna talk just a little bit about where we are now, I think a lot of this may be old news, kind of coming out of the master plan. Um but it's kind of like, this is how far we've come, and I want to facilitate the decisions that the board has to make going in. So with that, go ahead and go ahead. Um so just following from what Kelly just talked about, the concept of our project here, where we all remember from the wastewater plan that what made the no sense is separating the cities into two groupings and doing uh parent systems, serving the twin cities. Mill Gates, I'm sorry, Mill City Gates, but obviously Mill City having an existing wastewater plant that is operating. Um even if it's one that's a transitional state. And then Detroit Idina, named all new, coming off of their Saturday use. Um but don't worry about that. Next slide, if it covers the titles, okay, I can talk to it. Uh so just kind of touching on the current project files, that's the best, the best states we have right now. Um Mill City is the ongoing facility planning study. And that's one that is uh planned to finish in September twenty twenty three. So that's our overall roadmap for the facility that we're going to design, that's something that's presented to the UQ as a partner and stakeholder in this. Uh and the site evaluation for the rapid infiltration base. Now, Keller just talked about those rapid infiltration basins, the water percolates. Um if you're really looking for something fun to do on a weekend, go pull up the waste, uh EPA's wastewater fact sheets. And they actually have a fact sheet just for rapid infiltration bases. So the number one cause of failure in these systems is insufficient site assessment. Because everything is so critical, dependent on soils, the groundwater, that, that is, that is the point where all of these systems tend to fail if they're not carefully evaluated for their site. So we're doing that as part of a big component of the project, and it's for a very good reason. We've just finished the first days and we're moving into the second, I'll talk about that in some more detail, but um the point is that this is critical for the long-term success and sustainability of the project.
What are the dates down there on the bottom right that are covered by that?
Oh, sorry, uh those are, they, they for Detroit Idina, um and those are a little bit more speculative now, thanks. Uh so just dictated by ARPA requirements, we are, have some aggressive deadlines for building an asset of this size. Design, this is substantially complete, it's, it's adequate to engage a contractor, and that is December twenty twenty four uh with construction completed. Construction is to be completed by December twenty twenty six, but it takes in, in best case scenario, a month to close everything out, so that's why we're shooting November. But that is again, a deadline that was set by ARPA for the funding we have. Detroit Idina, we're looking at wrapping up our, I'll talk more about this in a second, but our septic program um by the end of twenty twenty four, that's when the program will end. Facility plan, we are shooting for about February, next year is when we expect to have that in. And site evaluation continuing through until the fall of next year. So it's a very basic overview of, as we gather more information, these will be updated more, you're gonna get next slide. Um but what I want to talk about with this group, and this was, I'm not in a prior presentation that we just, you know, talked about the DEQ. I kind of updated some budget numbers, just so you can see where we stand currently in terms of the overall project budget and the ARPA funding we received. Uh so through business oriented, the uh project has received a fifty million dollar allocation from the ARPA grants. And out of that fifty million, this first slide is just showing um Mill City Gates, which was directed, that's under legislative direction, forty million allocated towards that system. And this kind of gives you an overview of how it's breaking, broken down. Um vast majority is of course, construction. Um but we also have a great deal of technical information and data collection, modeling, support and construction oversight, all tied up into our engineering. And of course, land acquisition and support, all those parts of delivering this asset. Detroit Idina, right now is a ten million dollar allocation. And primarily, this is meant to be transitional assistance, until Detroit Idina is able to make that next step. Um so out of that ten million, we have two separate grants, one being the residential repairs grant, which has been primarily retroactive, most folks have already performed those repairs or are just in the final stages now. And they are, we are taking in applications as part of the joint program in Chicago. And we also have a commercial septic grant program, which has just launched, I'll talk some more details in a bit, but that is meant to assist with the downtown boardwork and those commercial properties throughout. So we've, since the beginning of the project, we've had a communal system delivered by the county. Um we've kind of revised that to create a grant program, which makes it a little bit easier on owners, it's a lot faster. It lets property owners choose their own destiny, not regard. Uh and I also want to talk about this breakdown, you'll see there's a pretty big portion dedicated towards preliminary engineering. That really consists of two things, the facility plan and the site assessment, just like we talked about Mill City. The facility plan for Detroit Idina is, without construction funding, that's really the logical stopping point. Um because a facility plan is pretty much usable at any point in time. Once you have a facility plan, it kind of stays the way it is and can be used in short order if, you know, a very large amount of money you know, falls out of the sky, just like it did with ARPA. And there's potential for ARPA uh recovery funding there, so from that plan, you could very easily springboard into design. However, you could also use that in ten years, twenty years, it's still good for foreseeable future. Design really gets tricky, because when you go, when you start to get into that design phase, you've got surveyors out on the ground picking up, you know, where things are, you're working around existing conditions. And you're looking at, you know, the current state of technology, that can very easily be made obsolete within a lot of time, so. Uh you don't typically move into design phase until you know that you are ready to go to construct. So that's why we've chosen that point, but we're also doing the facility assessment, because as long as those, I'm sorry, not the facility assessment, the site assessment. So the site assessment for the rapid infiltration basin, as long as nothing else is built on that place, and as long as the ground stays the same, that site assessment can still carry for so we're taking it as far as we can without the big chunk of construction money needed. And that next slide, you can see where we are in terms of the funding we have and the funding we don't. So these little, I know we all love for, love pie charts. These represent the amount of money that's being covered by ARPA and what's left of it. And with Mill City, we have, we're not exactly sure, because we won't know that, we won't know that construction cost until it's designed. But using the estimates we have, we're about five to fifteen million short, depends on how we look at the technology, how how we want to treat that wastewater, um some of those buttons we have to move around. With Detroit, we have about ten, we have ten million. And we're around fifty to sixty million.
For twenty twenty three dollars.
In twenty point three dollars, excellent point, in current dollars, what we have right now. This is including the septic assistance, and then including the portions that we're able to recover now and with the large construction costs, it's estimated to be a thousand dollar system. So this is where we are. Excellent, so I'm gonna pause right there before we just talk about where we are with Mill City. And uh any questions about, this is the latest budget allocation that went to OBDD. As with budgets, as a project moves along, budgets can change in individual pieces as we get better and better.
Is this being recorded?
Yes.
I need to go to Detroit pretty quick, uh so as long as I can have access to recording that, but to speed, to completing.
No problem, I, you're gonna need to cut me off, it's okay, go ahead. If we need to stop short, I can always talk more about this, I mean, but um would like to talk a little bit about Mill City. And then I'll talk a little bit about Detroit at the end, so we'll make sure that recording is available.
Thank you. Thank you.
Does she want you to go back one slide?
Yeah.
One point I wanted to kind of emphasize here is we don't know exactly what things are going to cost. Um we don't know with these septic, exactly how much of that grant will be used. Uh and again, with the facility plan for Detroit, I mean that it's hard to say, I don't know if it'll really be four million dollars, but I want to point that out in point that this, some of this at a later time, unspent monies can move around within the project. So just wanted to make that a take home. And then there may be decisions up ahead about what we do with the unspent funds as we get further along on different pieces. Uh no other questions, I'll just talk a little bit about Mill City in the context of what we just heard. So you can go in next slide, and I just want to explain, you know, Peter talked about the Mill City uh having the step system. That's actually not an uncommon transitional state for cities as they move from septic into a whole blown sewer system. A lot of them end up kind of with that step system where each individual home has a septic tank. And then a sewer gets built and then they plug into that, so it kind of just takes it through the septic into a sewer. And then once a treatment plant is built, a lot of cities tend to transition away from that septic. So new developments and it being a direct connection. But over time, those, those step systems also tend to get abandoned because But over time, those those step systems also tend to get abandoned because. It's just not worth it to replace them. So you, so you have a transitional state where you're taking in more and more. Raw waste and less treated. Uh, it also has the tanks get older. Maintenance costs tend to build up and it's just not worth replacing them. So when you, when you see what Mills. Uh, so what you see in Mill, Mill City existing is we kind of have a small collection system. It's a small man reflection system because most of that is pre-treated by septic. So uh, we want to be positioned to where Mill City is able to do a more. Like large scale system. Uh, update to transition to gravity as needed, but we just want to make sure that treatment plant is capable of handling it. Right now, everything that's existing in the city will be connecting to the new plant. And then those additional developments that are going in will be able to pump raw sewage, but that's part of what we'll have to work out through the facility plant study. And then this. New treatment facility is essentially completely separate from what's existing. The existing system is that recirculating bed with an equalization tank. Uh, it's not really set up to handle raw sewage. And then in gates, oh, I'm sorry, one more slide on this. Uh, just, I want to emphasize, I think Keller already covered this in my presentation. I'm gonna give you back to the treatment one. I'm not, yeah, because Keller already talked about it, but um, there. Part of our decision process is deciding what type of treatment we want. What level effluent do we actually need? That's going to be. Characterized by. Primarily how we not impact the groundwater and meet all the rules we need to meet. Uh, also, what do we want to do with that wastewater? If we, if we want options to utilize it for other purposes, that's part of our decision-making process.
Chris, real quick, maybe this should have been a question for Keller, but uh. We're at capacity basically right now for a Mill City system. Do we know what kind of a capacity that we will have for future development with the upgraded new system that we got now? So we're gonna have a fifty year capacity or, you know.
So fifty percent. So the plan is to take us out to a twenty year um projected growth. At the highest possible population projections. And that's kind of interesting because population projections depend on the city's growth. But at the same time, the sewer can be something that helps the city grow. So how do we do that? So chicken or the egg?
Correct.
So um, we'll be looking at, at other cities that install sewer systems and how those causes spike in growth. And applying that to Mill City. Now, we want to look as far ahead as we can, but also with this facility's space plan. So that we can do further enhancements later on. We don't say we're gonna build it and this is done. So.
So we're acquiring plenty of property and we're able to just, like I say, e- expand the system. Size and capacity.
And and those are part of, some of those decisions we make as we look at treatment designs is how much can we expand this in the future. Uh, and this is just very similar to a lot of plants I've worked on where there's a single treatment train. And then there's kind of a dotted line area where a future treatment train would go. And sometimes we're going into those later on and, oh, here's that plant from twenty years ago. Most, you know, most things work within new technology. So. We, we try not to put ourselves in a box in terms of what might come along in the future. Sometimes footprinting gets smaller. But we also don't want to, we don't want to set aside too much space and end up with more property we ever need. So it's kind of that that one. Uh, and then also with that plant being able to take in the city of Gates. Uh, this is, you can see this one, uh, this will be in the facility plan is the proposed collection system. Gates will be just no step going straight to a sewer. So just a line of gravity interceptors with several localized pumping stations. And each one of those is kind of when you talked about a pumping station where everybody's gravity feeds into a low point. And you don't want sewers to get any lower, so you pump it from there to um a centralized collection point. And so all of those will lead into a, this little pink dot here, a regional location. Where that is depends on how we want to. Um, lay out our force main between the two cities. So there's still decisions to be made. It's not, nothing is. Cut and stem here. Um, but regardless of where it is, it will be one single large regional pumping station that comes from Gates, you know, City. Along with a two and a half ish mile horse lane. So big components of a project, it's part of a large system. And if you go to the next slide, you can see those. Um, I went ahead and put both of the potential alignments that were in the facility plan on here. Again. Specific details can change, so there may be, you know, multiple versions of each of the alignments, whether they cost. Right at this bridge across a little bit sooner, but overall, we've talked about two concepts. One is staying in the Marion County side. Running along uh potentially that old railroad right way. Um, possibly using some ODOT railways part of that. It's all part of our design process that's ongoing. The other option is coming on the Lynn County side and primarily using uh county roads. And, oh, sorry, good, uh, you mentioned. Crossing at the bridge or crossing sooner. Uh, depends on where we need to cross. If that would involve a pipe bridge, those are pricey, but sometimes necessary. How we get across all depends upon. Essentially where we can, where we're allowed and where it can be done at with the least disruption. There was, I was walking. Walking at with Peter longer ago. And you mentioned going underneath the river and I went. Wow. Everything can be done. You gotta fix the pipe, you're gonna stop the river. So, you know, you saying building a bridge. A second bridge, not a vehicle bridge, but a bike bridge. Yeah.
Pedestrian bridge with a pipe underneath it.
Yeah, one of, one of, one of the benefits to. One of the benefits to hyper is they can be expanded on later to build things like um. You know, pedestrian uh footpaths, bicycle paths. Now, so as part of that overall whole large pic, big picture decision where we don't, you know, just as engineers, we don't just kind of make that ourselves. Yeah, there's, there's, there's a lot of decisions to be made there. Um, but yeah, and at the end of the day, we have to go across the river somehow. And excellent. Uh, and as our biggest challenge in this project is, Peter mentioned, we have the, the three basic goal. Says we can't discharge, oh, it says we can't discharge to the surface. Um, under that rule also basically says we can't discharge into the offer. Um, that's more, that's not. Really well in Oregon in general, but um. It still creates the, the question. You can't put it on the surface and you can't put it down deep into the offer. Where do you put it?
But it eventually goes to the river.
It all, at the end of the day, it's all recycled, so yeah, it's all.
But I think some of the potential basin sites are directly over the top.
Well, everything is essentially. So we can't go directly in the river. We can't go down to groundwater. So. A rapid infiltration basin lets us meet it somewhere in the middle. And I will say that I have seen rapid infiltration basin used kind of around the country for different purposes. Um, this is a very unique situation and I didn't use it strictly for disposal without treatment function. Uh, at least it's completely with me. So it's, you're, someone, you, you're going to be a very unique system when this gets done.
That, that's what they said about the system we have now and are building in.
And also, and also your system is out how many yards from the river? Are there your drain tube?
Only have now?
Yeah. Oil access and I filter. And uh, as part of that, oh, sorry, can I talk in the chart real quick? Uh, as part of that, this, we also have to provide groundwater protections under uh state regulations. That's one of the three criteria the DQ has to evaluate. Uh, regarding our compliance, three basic rules. Are we providing enough protections? And so you, you'll hear us talk about the monitoring wells that we're setting up. Part of that is to get a volume of data to show what is the quality of the groundwater right now. And how can we show that we are not impacting it? So that's one of those three criteria. And then also we need to show that we're creating an overall improvement over what's existing. Um, this is particularly relevant in the system where we have a lot of septic, many of which are aging systems. So getting everything into one centralized place, we can per achieve a lot better. Containment removal than we can in all these distributed subjects. So that's part of the case that we are making this facility plan to show the DQ that we're meeting this. Free base enrollment, all of its challenges. Okay, thank you. Uh, so he saw us all out there doing our um site evaluation um with our shallow test bits. That was phase one. Um, we did. Really with this, with this site. We don't look for what we look for in a typical septic system. Septic systems, the drain fields, most of that treatment is actually happening by the soil. But there's another aspect to this. As we're looking at Mill City's capacity. We need to be able to reliably and sustainably, day after day or of. indefinite period of time, keep getting rid of that water. So we actually need better drainage soil characteristics. Than we look at with the conventional drain. So part of this is all about making sure we have that capacity, not just to remove contaminants, but how much wastewater can we handle. And that's really the driving factor in our site evaluation. Good in space. With that, we were able to eliminate. One of those sites already, just because it didn't have the, the. Shallow surface characteristics we needed. So we're already down to three sites. And that's what we're doing now with our phase two evaluation. We're doing deep drilling down to several hundred feet, getting soil characteristics. Installing monitoring wells and looking at flow directions of groundwater. The lab characteristics of the soil, trying to find out, okay, which of these is really going to meet our needs. And of course, there's always impangible aspects to every site as well, not just what is the soil, but. How do we access that site? How is it going to impact the neighbors, the community? Is a site that makes sense for the city? So all those kind of go into our overall decision. Uh, so. So I mentioned before, we've got forty million going into that with that. Um, here's where we are now. We have the wastewater master plan that you've seen and we've completed our base one. Uh, we're working on the strategic permitting plan. That's just really putting all the different permits this project needs. Putting them into one plan dates and making sure we have a roadmap. Our facility plan. Site evaluation. And we are procuring a contractor. So that is something that Laura mentioned, we'll be asking the board is to um. Delegate a representative to take part in the procurement. That contractor will become part of the design team. That's kind of how the CMGC process works. It brings a contractor on board early on to do things like provide estimates, do constructability reviews. They really are an equal partner in the design process. And that's going to help us because as I mentioned before, we don't know exactly what all these things cost. As we start to take that design and narrow down the options. We can get a lot better pricing information, make better decisions uh with each step. So that's why we're. We're following this process. So that. That will be happening. Our intent is by the end of June or sooner to have a notice of intent to that contract. So I'll pause there. I've got maybe a ton of information out there. I want to pause and any more questions about Mill City while we're here?
Can I get a copy of a paper copy of this uh?
Absolutely. Well, I'll make sure, no, I'll bring paper copies too, like I ordered it, but yeah, I will, I get you. Make that to, I will distribute.
You could send it to me in the email like.
All right, I'll be, I know we're gonna wrap up. It's running short on time here, but I'll start very briefly about what's happening in Detroit. So just this concept of Detroit. I remember who said it. Someone had a great observation about Detroit, that there's not a lot of space. We're very spatially strained there. So our, our overall plan for Detroit Ida long term. Uh, is to actually select a site in Ida for the treatment. So um would be pumping everything uphill. And performing a treatment in Ida and then taking it further out to where we have potential infiltration sites.
Expensive.
Ways of life are always expensive. It's, it all comes down to um. Uh, and all of these are, all of these connections between the cities are all force mains, so they're all pressurized. You know, nothing really, just the, the constraints we have, nothing to run under gravity. Would be great if it can, but I'll tell you, running long gravity systems can get pricey too. We talked about how we don't want sewers deeper than twenty feet. I saw one that took a gravity sewer. Uh, canal, like they're about preparation. Forty-five foot deep panels. Not something anybody wants to be in the bottom of looking at. And it's just because if you go over such a long distance, you have to have so much fall. That really long transmission lines always end up being force mains because of that. So definitely in this case where we have shallow water tables and, and constraints. It's gonna be a force main across, so let's have slightly bigger pumps. But we have a lot of potential sites and I'm gonna, yes, what's the pressure in the force main? Uh, typically it's lower than a water distribution system, twenty to forty psi is pretty typical. You can even, you can see the lower, um, force mains are actually driven more by velocity. Because there, it's not like clean waters to get more scouring, so we tend to have pretty strict velocity requirements for. Uh, liquid moving through the pipe. So three to seventy per second is just what I've always seen.
So in that system, you're pumping from a step system or from a. Your sewage system?
Yeah, great question. I'm, yeah, uh. Initially, we had shown a Detroit step collection system. Um, that's one of those decision points that we'll have to make as we look at how do we transition Detroit. Um, but ideally, you know, step systems. Are a lot more maintenance, even though they can let people transition from the existing system. We are required that everybody who was participating in our commercial brand be ready to do a direct superconnection. Ideally, Detroit would go straight to a full blown sewer. So bypassing that, that step transition. So you'll see it referred to as a step system in the master plan, just because it's not really known yet. Uh, but the ideal thing to do would be just get everybody connected to a gravity spring. And then same for, same for Ida, you know, having a single gravity system going through the city. And then we are evaluating those potential sites that you just talked about, the McCoy site, the US forestry sites. So that's an ongoing process. We're still a little earlier on than we are in Mill City, so hopefully we'll have some estimates going in the summer.
But dealing with forest service land, it's gonna take three years to even acquire. Of ourself. Potentially to even get that property, so. As long as we stay editing.
We have, well, that's, we're, we're moving on it now, yeah. And the whole point is to be, we have two sites selected, so the whole point is to be adaptable enough. If we do receive a tremendous amount of recovery money, I mean, they never said it would happen, but they'll see. Here we are. The project is very real, so. You know, that's a great point. We want to be ready to adjust. And um, the grants. We've had the residential grant. Everybody here is pretty familiar with it. People are getting reimbursed for septic repairs in the fire area. Uh, back in December, we presented the concept of a county-built public collective sewer system. Um, wasn't necessarily a hit with everybody, just because it involves some properties being drain fields for others. And a lot of um, right, right of entries for the county to then build it, plus being a federal. Federally funded construction project made it pricey. Federally funded construction project, they're pricey. Uh at the time, we weren't sure if we could do a grant. So in the months, we've been having talked with business org again, looking over the possibilities and that grant program has now gone live. So um the grant program essentially builds on the residential program. But for much larger commercial systems, giving everybody assistance. The goal of that is to pay for one hundred percent of the costs of a permitted septic system for each. Commercial property owner, and they can, they can choose what they want. Um in terms of where that's located, uh what type of system, and we've been approved to reimburse them.
Does that reimbursement also come with the requirement is when the sewer system goes online, they must hook up?
It does, absolutely does. So does bring attached that assistance is when we go back. Not only do they have to, they have to get to connection, but it has to be designed in a way that makes the connection easy. With that, we're kind of doing a lot of individual engagement, so um we did a short little webinar talk and I'm meeting one on one with all those. Property owners, so we've identified fifty-five so far. Big take from this is that property is changing hands up there and we don't always have the best contact. So we're encouraging everybody to reach out to us, um I recently met with a couple owners that have just bought in property, so. Making those connections, our key thing is we just want everybody to be able to take advantage of that grant before the deadline starts. When is that? The November of twenty twenty? Okay, I, no, this work session has been a tremendous amount of information here, um everybody's ready for the quiz now, right? Uh just real quick to touch on where we are in Detroit, um so we have both grants for, for both brands in progress. Um the site evaluation is in progress and we're kicking off the facility plan later this summer. Oh, uh but, yeah, sorry, that number that says five point six seven, that was, I left that calculation in there that was. That's actually an exact calculation of the master plan estimate, but I shouldn't do that because estimates are a margin, so fifty to sixty. Actually, let me correct this up there. So with that, um we're gonna open up to questions and general discussion about this, this is a great chance while we're out here.
I'm gonna have to. Let us go again and look at what you're sending out, and I'm sure I'll have some questions on even for for Keller.
Or my questions are gonna be after Keller tells what kind of system or plant or things like that. Are gonna be in play.
Well, hopefully, you know, as we're working through this, we're not just telling you what system you're gonna have. We're all taking part in that decision process, because there's a lot of factors to that decision. They're not all engineering, some are.
Right.
Much more, what we're sure needs best.
Uh no, I, you know, I go back to the bridge, bicycle, pedestrian. You know, a second bridge coming into Mill City from Gates. But digging, going down Kingwood in Lynn County, when this is Marion County project, wouldn't it save? I know you're looking at it, but wouldn't it save dollars to build that second bridge? Utilize it later on for something, you know, like pedestrian or bicycle, but wouldn't that save money then coming down Kingwood or yes?
I mean, I mean, at the end of the day, we'll have to, you know, it's, it's, it's always impossible to. Make decisions about a good cost and what they cost, and how, how will it cost upon certain things like a high bridge or, um you know. Directional going at that deck, I mean, so. One of our big advantages of bringing on the CMGC is to have a contractor in the room who does these, who can give us pricing. So we can start making exactly those decisions.
There is an ongoing project, put that walking trail in the city, it's, it's not shut there yet. If it can somehow with that bridge, I did that walking trail system, might push buy-in from another project.
Yeah, a lot of that was discussed about getting that pipe down in there, you know, getting it gravelled, which. You know, the, the sewer project would do. And then turn it over to that project and then they would asphalt it or whatever, but I think that would just. Be an awesome.
Way too much.
Yeah, I don't. I think, I think that, you know, for, for the communities to do, it'd be awesome, you know?
It's been thought of and discussed and also takes the sign up from state parks, from BODA, from everybody.
I almost said, well, I almost said, there's, there's that trail, that railroad trail.
There's a lot of, yeah, I know, I know, I. I found it earlier today too, so, yes, we all agree that's a great idea. And uh that's one of the components that I would like to push forward, obviously, is. Uh cause I see you develop a trail along with the fire and the act of maintenance, all pretty great.
Uh I said that to stop the stays about what we're talking about. But um but I did just have a question, because I saw the presentation last Friday and then today. And you just mentioned it was good to be talking with the NSA board, are you also talking with the Mill City operators? About this, and my question is, should we um? At some, at what point should we start inviting those most of the operators to attend this meeting to inform our board? Where, kind of where are we entering that process?
The operators, I mean, our public works. Supervisor, whoever operates the system.
So on Friday, and he made comment that got my attention, and so, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, actually, so that was gonna be my kind of sign off too, it's perfect timing. I was gonna say, I wanted to leave with a, one party thought about, about water wastewater engineering. We never um just come in and say, this is what you're getting. The um the best project's always involved a lot of early and a lot of heavy, heavy cooperation. With those operators and you learn things you would never imagine. Um although, a real big story here too about, you saw the entire process of the wastewater treatment train. And I once asked an operator, what, what's the, I always thought the worst possible job would be the grid builders, because of those. They saw early on when they screened out those solids, you know, that's gonna be terrible, and smiled up here and says. My wife and her three car diamond ring that you don't agree.
Yeah.
But you learn a tremendous amount of how these systems actually work too, and the ways that we come to um. The individual needs of each project, so we are absolutely at the point now where we want to start engaging with. Operations and engaging with, you know, the entity that's going to operate the system, you know? That's where we.
That's a good point, because if, if, if the operator now is. Class two, you know, the, the certificate they have, and it's gonna take a certificate of one. You know, they get more involved and then they can start studying and going for that certificate. In order to be able to operate the new system.
We try and be. Uh how should I say, we try and motivate our staff and be constantly trying to better themselves, like send them to the. To the conferences and getting their certificates and stuff and upgrades. We have to know what kind of certificate level will be required, the different kinds of plants that obviously, uh the mechanical plant. Takes a higher certificate, when it gets to that point also, we can contract with outside agencies, so. We operate under those certificates, as we have done before when we were training in our, our current.
And they come in a month later and review.
Basically, they, they just supervise and and stuff, and we have some of that and stuff. And our people gain the experience while they're working with the system and it's. To get certificates is not just taking a test, you have to have time. And a lot of time.
And that's, and that's exactly why we have that um, one of those design frameworks is what class is gonna be required.
Exactly.
And you know, we might say, oh, we would love to have uh class A plus affluent, you know, this is, this stuff is ready to put on lettuce crops and.
Right.
Well, wait a minute, what class of operators do we need and how would we let's make, is this, is it for this entity? To retain a class three operator, because they're not using the mine.
And they're not cheap. That's why they're bringing them in now, like you said, you know, and I, you know, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
You know, I just wanna better themselves, but I think it's great, great.
Well, we have our, we have our public work supervisor, who is our, our certificate older operator. Uh and uh he's trying to prove some up behind him with the certificates and stuff, so. It's a constant, uh because soon as you get them up there too, bigger cities wanna steal them away from you.
I, I, I won't, I won't say whether or not, I didn't know if that's happened, I just know that the county's not hiring any version of another operator. We just had a lesson for you.
Yeah, okay, so yeah, so it's a very competitive uh job market there, so.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
Cut the recording.
Thank you very much, if you have any other questions for Chris.